Call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote. Harold Lamos.
Here.
Casey Barney.
Here.
Teja Singa Schubelingham.
Present.
Fran Newton here. Lee Sharps is not here. Okay. We are going to start this meeting with a couple of public hearings. And the first will be to accept additional appropriation from the New Hampshire Highway Block Grant Aid. Do we have anybody speaking to that, Charlie? No. Okay. Do you want to?
Does anyone want to speak?
Does anyone want to speak to that? Okay. Charlie, you just want to give us an overview?
Okay. The state has, I guess you could say determiner, the state legislator, legislation has given towns and communities an extra $30 million appropriation to the highway block grant. Our portion is $48,654.35. We have received it, but we could not spend it until we actually had an official public hearing for acceptance. The funds are to be used strictly for the roads and are to be spent within the next calendar year.
Is that 2018?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not in lapses until?
Okay. I was going to say we're running out of time.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public. Are there any questions, concerns? Yes, Mr. Badger.
Could this money be used to fund like the Levitt Hill project?
I don't see why not.
Levitt Hill?
Levitt Hill? You mean Thompson Street?
Tom.
Thompson Street.
Smith Hill.
Smith Hill. Oh, that project.
Yeah. Road.
Yeah. I would imagine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. Is there anything from the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I spoke with our finance worker. She recommended that if we decide to accept the money, that we also state specifically how it's going to be held and even perhaps what purpose it will be held for.
Well, I mean, we said it's for roads. As in the usual block grant that we get every year. What are the specifications for that, Charlie? I'm assuming this falls under the same category?
Yes.
That we are to use it for roads and whatever that means. It's not just paving roads, but it's fixing culverts, whatever, all that stuff that's associated with road maintenance. We can either keep it in our operating budget or we can put it into a capital reserve. I think those are the only two choices we have.
So I believe the recommendation was for us to decide which one of, you know, which one of our options we want to exercise.
What are the thoughts?
We have to decide today.
No, we don't have to decide today. We just have to accept the money.
Yeah.
We will decide it within the course of the budget process, preparing the budget for next year.
Next year.
Okay. Well, that was what her recommendation was, that actually upon accepting it, that we do so with a, you know, a clear idea of how we were going to hold that.
Well, I think that's something we can discuss as we plan our, complete our budget, decide how best to use it. And I don't see any issue with putting it in either place, but I don't know if we really need to make a decision tonight. I mean, we need to approve to accept it. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the additional highway block grant funds?
I have a motion.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next will be three public hearings for community development block grant application.
That doesn't start till 6:30.
That doesn't start till 6:30?
Yeah.
Oh. So we go into a regular agenda?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, fine. Okay. So the first is, is there any public comment on the agenda before we get started? Seeing none, we will approve to approval of the minutes. The first is the Board of Select meeting for 8/7. Are there any comments or corrections? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August 7th as written.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of August 7th, 2017, as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstained.
Absent.
Okay. Three, yes. Teja Singa abstained. Next are the minutes of 8:15. Are there any comments, corrections?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Line 43 on page one. Recommend that read, the board agreed unanimously.
Okay.
Which, wait, hold on a second.
Line 43.
Line 43, page one.
Yeah. It wasn't that?
Board agreed to reduce the town mechanical overtime line from $3,000 to $2,000.
Because that was a separate motion that we had, and we took that vote, and that was unanimous, as I recall.
Okay.
For that specific line.
How come it says here? Oh, that, no, never mind. That was specific. Yes, okay. Got it.
Further on page two, line 34. I believe the word "but" should be changed to "and." Service from the consultant and had concerns going forward.
Okay.
Because that's what I was expressing.
Okay. That's fine.
So let's see. Further on line 26 of page three. Recommend that, no, let's see. Let's start with line 22. I'd like it to read, property reevaluation line was increased to $33,000 to coincide with townwide reevaluation. Reason being, I'd like for the readers of the minutes to know that that was a line item as opposed to the entire section which we voted for separately.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
What was that number again?
$33,000.
$33,000.
So that's the only thing you're changing? Yep. Adding?
Yeah.
Yes. And further on line three. So.
Line, which page?
Oh, I'm sorry. Page three, line three.
Okay.
Selectman Schubelingham suggested, so what I'd like for that to read is Selectman Schubelingham suggested compromise of moving a portion of the funding to the executive training line to offset proposed salary elimination.
Selectman Civics suggested a compromise to moving?
A compromise of moving a portion of the funding from the salary line to the executive training line to offset the proposed, or his proposed, because that was my proposal, his proposal, his proposed salary elimination.
Funding from the salary line to? What did you say before, executive training?
Okay. From the salary line to the executive training line to offset the proposed, or his proposed, salary elimination.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
The only thing I see is, should the board decide on if we want to use the term unanimously or an all in favor? Because I just want everything to coincide. Does it matter?
I don't, I don't think it matters. But I think the sentiment is the same.
Okay.
But yeah. Consistency is always a good thing, Howard. Okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August 14th as amended.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Revision to the 6/7, 2017 minutes to reflect expenditure from the Road Improvement Capital Reserve Fund, shim and overlay River Street. I just think we weren't clear on where the funds were coming from.
Yeah.
We'd like to amend those minutes to reflect our intent. So is there a motion to amend?
Any amount.
And amend the minutes of 6/7 to reflect the expenditure and the expenditure from Road Improvement Fund and to specify that it's from capital reserve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any further discussion?
Road Improvement Capital Reserve?
Yep.
Okay.
As long as the line is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll add it.
All those in favor of the revision?
Aye.
Opposed? You weren't there. Okay, I approve. So it's three approvals, one abstention. Okay. Consent agenda. We have the general fund manifest and the amount of $120,068. Payroll manifest, $14,024. Memo to the trustees of the trust fund, the Public Works CRF disbursement purchase for the greater that we voted to expend. Notice of intent to excavate. And the Department of Revenue MS 535.
We also have the clerk received a letter from the state to announce the special election on Tuesday.
Okay.
That needs to be signed.
Yes. Okay. So that's this. So we just need to sign this? Okay. I'm going to pass these along as soon as I sign them and then move on with the agenda so we don't spend a lot of time.
I think most are signed.
I think most are signed.
The important one is just the top one.
Yeah. Just take a look through them. Let me pass them, no, pass them back to Harold last, and he can hand them over to Wendy. Okay. Department heads. Fire chief to discuss ambulance billing.
Yeah. I'm guessing that you've all got the letter that I sent out regarding ambulance billing that Comstar did drop us last year. And we've been searching. We have, I think the county administrator distributed a copy of the proposed contract from the company that we decided to go with. And what I'm asking for tonight is direction from the board in terms of what our options are. For example, we could either go with it. And I, you know, I don't have the budget of this year, as I stated. So we either go ahead with it and it comes out of my general budget. Okay? And I just simply cut some things that we were planning to do and just pull that. Or to go ahead with it and pay for the, pay for the one-time expense of the setup with funds from that account that was established in 2005, using revenue from ambulance transports. And?
And is there enough money in that to cover?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, there's. Quite a bit. The issue is, and I brought a copy of this tonight. I possibly should have sent that out to you. The issue is the wording. And are you familiar with that article?
Yeah, I gave them copies.
Oh, you did?
This is the?
2005?
The wording? Yeah, 2005, at Warren.
Yeah.
Okay. My question for you is, you know, that clearly says apparatus or equipment relating to the fire department. Looking at the finance record for that account, I can see where we routinely taken money from that account to pay the percentage that the former billing agent was due after each bill.
Yep.
So I guess my thoughts are that's a pattern of using that to help sustain that account. So my question is, could the money come from there to deal with this and then have it not affect the budget?
Right.
Of course, another alternative would be to say, no, don't go ahead with this. Fund it for next year, and we'll do it then. Or just to get it all together.
Right.
We don't transport a lot.
Right.
However, having, right after we sent this out, we've had two transports. You know, it's, and a billing agency is going to be more successful than we are because we just don't have the resources at the time to go after people that are somewhat reluctant.
Right. I think we should discuss two items. The first being, should we go forward with this period? And then we'll have a second discussion on how best to fund it. So is there any discussion on the first part of the proposal, whether or not to go with this new contract?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So specifically speaking about this contract, if it's taken out of the general line, my concern is that I believe it's a three-year contract. And so?
Yes, it is.
That seems to, okay.
Yeah. So go ahead.
So my concern if it's taken out, taken out of the general fund is that it's a multi-year contract. Multi-year contracts are akin to appropriation. And I believe that appropriation is beyond the purview of this board. So I have a concern about that.
Okay. This expense that I'm talking about is a one-time expense.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief.
This is to establish our account and to help us with the paperwork to file with Medicare, Medicaid, and all those agencies, the government agencies. That's what, that's a startup cost. From that point forward, it would not require any further funds. In other words, they would bill us at 8% of whatever they collected, which is an improvement over the former agency which billed us for 10%.
So you're actually saving money.
Yeah.
But I don't anticipate, for example, this first time, the setup fee is $2,500. I do not expect to see that again.
Okay. So to clarify, if I may?
No, go ahead.
So to clarify, the payment that's made to the company would be made out of the money that would otherwise be collected for billing. They're going to take a portion, they're going to say 8% off of what's being collected. So there's not going to be any money, no funds that actually leave your account. You're not going to pay it, and then you're going to be reimbursed. You're going to, they're going to be paid directly from?
Yeah. We get a check from them. And then according to this records I've gotten from finance, we, the town then submits a check to the billing agent for their share, the percentage. They give us what they collect.
Yeah.
We then in turn pay them the percentage that we owe.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. So you don't have any concerns about the one-time expense?
Right.
It was the, it was the annual billing?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
The other concern or question that I have is that I noticed that the company is out of Pennsylvania. Did you look into any?
There are, there are other local departments that are using this same company.
My question was, did you look at in-state companies that offer the same service as this company?
We ran across a few. Comstar was the closest one, actually. And they're in Massachusetts, Raul Mass.
Okay.
And they're the ones that dropped us. And there was, I think maybe one or two others in New Hampshire, but the percentages they were charging was higher. And this, this company has a great reputation. We researched it, talked to some departments that are using them currently. And the deputy actually did most of the labor on that. But came back, after having several meetings, he came back and made the recommendation that we go with him.
So how much of a percentage difference is that? I mean, they're, they're asking for 8%. Can you give me an idea?
Well, this was the only one we found that was below 10%.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to proceed with the contract as described.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Yes.
Is it all right if the chief signs it, or do you?
As far as I'm concerned, if we approve it, he can sign it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Unless anyone else has any issue with that. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So how much transporting do you do? I mean, can you give us a?
It varies. Okay? No, I'm not trying to, the question, it just varies. It's very hard to predict. Some years we've done, maybe one or two. Other years we've done more. We transport when, for example, if Plymouth is busy and they can't get a second ambulance out. Or if we arrive and there's more than one patient, such as the other Friday evening, if that was the case. And on the previous one we did was because Plymouth, Plymouth did not get a second ambulance out and they were occupied, so we transported. And our guys are also authorized. If we arrive and the patient simply needs to go right then and cannot wait for the ambulance to come now from Plymouth, then they are authorized to transport as well. So, and a lot of our transports originate on the interstate during motor vehicle accidents because you may anticipate, you know, multiple patients. You have to go.
I don't know if this is before you moved to town, but I think the one time that I can remember we had more than one in a day was we have an ice storm up here on the highway.
Oh, that sudden snowstorm, yep.
Slipped over. We had several people. We had a pileup. About 38 or 42 car pileup.
Yeah.
So we had pretty much every ambulance coming. But it's good to have that contract locked in. If you, if you have that situation, it's kind of a safety clause. To save 2%, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it's, in the long run, I mean, it'll add up.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So how much do you rely on the projection of this given revenue? I mean, do you?
It's, we have not expended any funds out of it. In fact, the record that I have here from finance says or shows that the only expenditures from it have gone to pay the town, the percentage share that Comstar was due. We have not utilized it for anything else. We've allowed it to accumulate. I would say though that the amount that's in there now is enough that it would, it could, is very close to being able to save. For example, the cardiac monitor that we have failed, and we had to replace it. Okay? There's pretty darn close to enough money in there to actually replace it. So we've more or less treated it as a contingency fund should something catastrophic happen to some equipment that we absolutely need to have. And we have not dipped into it for management purposes or anything else. It's pretty, the warrant article was pretty specific.
It looks like you'd only be utilizing about 12.5% of the account. And even if that was a low-end estimate, you said it's over $20,000. But based upon $20,000, $2,500, we're looking at 12.5%. So it's really not a big hit from that if you just wanted to pay it outright. You'd be done with it.
And with the transports we've done this year, there's a very good chance that that will be made back.
It was such a nominal number.
Yes. Any? Yes.
To the board, one of my thoughts is that I would like to see this done with an in-state company, especially since I don't hear that there is a reliance on that revenue. That revenue is kind of erratic. Sure, I can understand saving the percentage, you know, having an increased revenue of a few percent. But I think also the loss of that few percentiles could be offset by the benefit of strengthening the in-state economy by supporting the local business or a state business.
Was the, was the closest person the person that just dropped us?
Pardon?
The closest person was the person that just dropped us, correct?
Yeah. There was one or two in New Hampshire, I think down on Nashua or Manchester, somewhere in that area.
But you researched the qualifications of all of these organizations, I trust?
Yes.
And it?
I have no further comments.
Okay.
I think we depend more upon the service than the income. That's my outlook on it. If the chief has done his research and found a reputable company, I think that although I do like to support local, that that in my mind outweighs a local-based business. It's the reliability of service.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to proceed with the contract as stated, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. And now as to where the funds come. I understand that it's a wording issue in the warrant article. It strikes me that it's logical to come out of that and apparently always has. And no matter what, we should probably ensure that that wording gets modified to include this because it rightly belongs within that category, in my opinion. But I don't know how everyone feels about taking that money there this year because of the technicality that the wording doesn't specifically cover it unless you can see that there's some room for interpretation. Steve, yes?
Yeah. Again, I just want to reiterate that I feel that we've set a pattern that any expenses for that account are, there's a long history of it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I understand that there's a long history. However, I am concerned about the wording of the warrant article, specifically the sentence that reads this as follows. "Any surplus in said fund shall not be deemed part of the general fund, fund accumulated surplus, and shall be expended only after a vote by the legislative body to appropriate a specific amount from said fund or, from said fund for a specific purpose related to the purpose of the fund or source of revenue." So my concern is, what is the definition of surplus? I'm not necessarily, you know, against the idea of taking it out of this, this fund, but my question is, the surplus, does what you want to spend for the fulfillment of this contract constitute surplus or, or not? Because if it sounds like it's, you know, surplus, then it might be a different story, so.
I'm not sure how I define surplus here.
I don't either. That's my concern.
Okay. I mean, whatever money we collect goes into that account, period. That's my experience.
Money goes in and money comes out. That's kind of the way it is.
Well, for paying for, you could look at the expenditures from that line or from that account as being those that were made to maintain it
Yep.
in terms of paying the billing agent's share.
Yeah.
And that's my question. I'm not trying to.
No, no, no. I, I hear you. So, you're right.
You know.
So there's really no, given the wording, So there's really no, given the wording, there's really no issue with us saying you can take it out of that fund at this point? It doesn't prohibit that at all? Is that your interpretation, Steve?
Well, I'm just saying that nobody objected to money coming out of there to be paying all along for, really, which is an expense that's brought about by that line itself, by actually collecting.
Exactly. That's what I said, it rightly belongs, in my opinion, to that particular category. And it doesn't seem right to take it out of the general fund.
Now, I'm reading this and start at the top. First sentence, to me, there's a question where it may make it cut and dry. It says, "To see if the town will adopt the provisions of RSA 31:95/CE to restrict the revenues from ambulance billing to expenditures for the purpose of the fire department apparatus or equipment when needed."
Mm-hmm.
Now, if we're under contractual obligation, doesn't that become our apparatus?
I would assume it does, yes.
So you're spending the funds in your apparatus, so isn't that cut and dry right there?
Now, that's a very good point, Harold. I would be very comfortable defending that position.
So would I.
Okay.
Me too.
Any further comment?
I'd like further information.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the new contract funds and the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to come out of the ambulance fund, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, so that's that. All right, Steve, thank you very much. Anything else? Nope, okay.
Any other questions?
All right, Chief Randall.
Public hearing.
Oh, we're going to do a public hearing now? Okay, never mind. Hang on. Sorry, Tony. Okay. So, I'm going to open the public hearing for the proposed Harvey Heights renovations. The community development block grant funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to five hundred thousand dollars annually is available on a competitive basis for public facility and housing projects, up to five hundred thousand dollars for economic development projects, and up to three hundred and fifty thousand for emergency activities. All projects must directly benefit low and moderate income persons. Up to twelve thousand dollars per study is available for planning grants. This is a proposed application to the Community Development Finance Authority for up to five hundred thousand dollars in community development block grant funds. The town will retain some of the CDBG funds to cover administrative expenses and sub-grant the bulk of the funds to the Laconia Area Community Trust Land, Inc., Land Trust, Inc., for rehabilitation of forty existing units of affordable housing at Harvey Heights, also known as Ledgewood Estate Apartments, Ledgewood Lane off Avery Street in Ashland, New Hampshire. The rehabilitation project will improve health and safety conditions on the property, provide energy efficiency and renewable energy updates to enhance long-term affordability and improve the exterior appearance of the property. The apartments will remain affordable for low and moderate income individuals for a minimum of twenty years. This project conforms with Ashland's Housing and Community Development Plan's goal of encourage a varied stock of safe, sanitary, decent, and affordable housing for persons of all age and income groups, short and long-term goals. So I will open this hearing for public comments. Yes, please.
I'm Donna Lane, CDBG consultant. I just want, I have public handouts here.
Okay.
Do I just pass them back or leave them in a pileup?
Okay.
And if I want one? I'll leave mine on there, okay? Thank you.
Any comments, questions for this particular proposal, application? Yes?
What's happening to the residents that are currently there?
Can you answer that question?
I was accommodating them.
So, I'm Sal Stephen Hubbard, I'm the Housing Development Director, we work on the Area Community Land Trust. And we are planning to temporarily relocate tenants while the rehab is going on and then move them back into their apartments.
Locally or outside?
Locally. We're hoping to do it all on-site, to have some vacant apartments, remove people in temporarily while the block of units is being rehabbed, and move them back into new and house apartments. That's the plan right now.
How long do you expect the whole project to last?
Probably about a year.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Is it appropriate for the board to speak at this time?
Absolutely. No, go right ahead.
First, I just wanted to clarify, my understanding is that we are having three consecutive public hearings for this?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, which specific, can you just clarify for me which specific item this particular public hearing is for?
The proposed application.
Right.
It's the application to apply for funds to do the rehab on the property.
Okay. I'd like to further make some comments.
Of course.
One of, so first, I'd like to say, I've put a lot of time into deliberating this and researching it, a lot of time, hours, just so you know that I gave it, you know, I'm giving it a fair shake, as it were. And before I go on to my specific comments, I'm sure that some of my colleagues, others may like to then, after I speak, take my comments and make it out to sound that I'm not sympathetic, you know, to the low-income situation for housing. I'd like to let you know that I am. My family lost their home. My parents were both homeless. I spent some time in a homeless shelter myself. My mother was injured, and then she lived in subsidized housing for many years. So, you know, I have a lot of family connections. So with that as kind of the foundation, and knowing that I put the research in, now I'd like to make some comments about it. One of my concerns is the amount of time that it would bind those units to an obligation to remain essentially Section eight housing. I have an email from one of you speaking to a minimum of twenty-eight years to up to ninety-nine years. And here's my concern about that. I understand that subsidized housing is important for people to, you know, have an affordable rental situation, okay? But in my experience, and my belief based on my experience, is that individuals that are low-income would really like to own their property, ideally. And I think that a better option is a housing cooperative, to find financing for housing cooperatives. So, the last thing I'd like to say on this is that, you know, some might try to kind of counterspend this and make it sound that I'm not interested in you fixing the housing, that I'm not interested in you improving it. That's not true. That's not the question, actually, that's before me, as I see it, as a member of this board. You're the owners of that property. As a personal, you know, item, I do think that it should be improved, but I see that more as a responsibility for the owners. The question that's before me is, if the method that you are seeking out, and particularly the sponsorship that you're looking for through the town, if that's what's best for the town? So, thank you for your time.
Any other comments?
My only question to you on this is, the upkeep of this has been, like you said, some of the work hadn't been done in a while. I know that this structure was built approximately forty years ago. When you upgrade this and you renovate, is there any intention as far as ADA compliance in the front stoops and the back balconies? I know that they'll no longer be grandfather clauses once you swing a hammer.
Right, we're hoping to make at least two units fully ADA compliant.
I'm thinking also for fire code, I'm looking at the picture of the back of your building, and even the first floor truly isn't a first floor at that rate. I mean, you could get someone in the front door, I mean, I just look at, I have a family member who has been in a wheelchair for the greater part of his life, and I'm just, I'm looking at this going, there's no way out.
Yeah, there's no ADA compliance right there. The life safety systems are below our standards, so we're also planning on doing a sprinkler system.
Okay.
Which gives people a much safer environment to live in. So upgrade the fire safety systems, the life safety systems, make at least two units ADA compliant. Those are two really important things to us.
Now, whereas this is, you know, some form of federal funding as far as is done, have you looked into, or are you going to include, any of the homeland security parameters as far as security around the perimeter, you know, wildlife to keep them out, or people to keep them from egressing that way, a certain way? I know in the past that I've seen some of the other units managed by, you know, they'll put up new fencing, or they'll put up upgraded perimeter. Is that something that's on the game plan for this?
That is not currently on the game plan, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Harold. Any other questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would propose as an alternative to the board accepting this, that a warrant article be considered, perhaps for the people to legislate this and decide for themselves, especially in light of the fact that it has such far-reaching implications for the town. Thank you.
Susan, did you have your hand raised?
Well, I know with federal funds through HUD, again, the alternative to a housing cooperative, I mean, there is an avenue for that. It is a very complicated, multi-layered plans to be submitted to HUD to approve of home ownership being included in the mix. The other thing about housing cooperatives is they basically form in two ways. There's a group that is interested in creating one and form their corporation, and either look for land or put their land into a cooperative and do outreach for people to join them. The other one that's been successful in this state is mostly with the manufactured housing parks, where internally they decide they want to be a cooperative. There's a hundred and twenty of them in the state. However, they are already homeowners. The next layer in their situation is that they want only property that their homes sit on and be in control of the maintenance and the property itself. You can impose this model on anybody. I don't know if everybody in those forty units has been approached with even the idea that they have to somehow buy into, buy into or get out, because that's basically what would have to happen. And there are RSAs that govern how a housing cooperative forms itself and runs, and I know, because I lived in one for thirteen years, I was involved in forming one, and living in it until, like, 2002.
Right.
So it's a little more complicated than just suggesting it as the model for these people, because, as I say, if the majority living there now really wanted to go that route, it still is, it is a very time-consuming process, and there's no guarantees that how the funding would shake out for them to be able to buy into property.
Right. Thank you, Susan. I don't think it's up to the town to impose upon an existing housing development how it has to be. I think that's up to the owners and the residents, so I'm not sure what go-to warrant article will do. Yes, Steve?
I'd just like to say that in my role as Board Chief, I spent some time up there, and I think that this is going to really improve some of the situations that they're dealing with and have for some time. There are some issues relating to the age of the building, particularly in the basement areas, that I think that this project is probably going to remedy quite successfully. And I will never stand up and speak against somebody putting sprinklers in their building.
I'm sure you wouldn't.
As far as maintaining safety and protecting the citizens of Ashland who currently occupy those units.
Right. And I can state also that I have visited those residences on occasion when they have mold issues. And mold, as you know, grows as a result of moisture, and I know the windows have caused a problem, and as Steve mentioned, the basement has caused a problem. And it's kind of hard to keep the mold down when the moisture is there. So from a health perspective, I'm certainly all in favor of making those improvements. Any other comments? In that case, I will close this section of the public hearing, and we will now open the public hearing on Housing and Community Development Plan. The Town of Ashland commits to the following goals to meet its housing and community development needs. Goal: Encourage a varied stock of safe, sanitary, decent, and affordable housing for persons of all age and income groups, short and long-term. Goal: Encourage economic development activities to increase quality industrial and commercial development. Encourage the expansion and retention of employment opportunities for residents. Encourage municipal and private water and wastewater systems that are safe, sanitary, and that meet DES regulations. Preserve and promote the town's historically and culturally significant structures. Promote activities that protect the health and safety of residents and visitors. As a matter of policy, Ashland will minimize the involuntary displacement of households from their neighborhoods. These goals are consistent with the Town of Ashland's master plan and local ordinances. Any federal CDBG grant funds awarded to address any of these goals shall be expended consistent with national objectives and shall, at a minimum, provide improved housing in accordance with Section eight standards, be used for public facility projects, employment opportunities, or feasibility studies. All CDBG-funded projects shall primarily benefit low and moderate income persons or households, and shall not benefit moderate income persons or households to the exclusion of low-income persons or households. I will open it up for public comment or select board comment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Again, I would recommend that this go-to warrant article, due to the potential far-reaching and wide-reaching impacts, I don't, you know, I don't, I think that several of the items are obviously good, and, you know, mostly the last paragraph is what I have a concern with. I do have some concern with how it ties into the master plan. I've been reading through the master plan, and there are some concerns that I have with the master plan, so for that reason, I would recommend that it go to warrant article.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I will close this section of the public hearing. Now I will open the public hearing on Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan. This plan outlines measures under the Uniform Relocation Act required for CDBG projects that involve any displacement or relocation of persons or businesses. If the town were to undertake a CDBG project which involved displacement or relocation, they would follow this plan. The plan outlines the measures they would take to find comparable, suitable housing for persons or businesses displaced or relocated. Temporary relocation will be required during this project. While units are undergoing rehabilitation, if the household needs to be temporarily moved, they will be moved to an empty unit on-site, a trailer on-site, an off-site LACLT unit, I'm not sure what that stands for.
Land Trust.
Laconia Land Trust, thank you. Or to a local hotel motel. LACLT will pay all temporary relocation costs. And I will open this up for public hearing, for comment.
The only question I have about that is, we're a small town, we only have one of your facilities in town here. Have you compiled the list of housing or the amount that is available within our zip code so that we're not held liable if it's something that cannot be upheld on your side for a lack of trailers or a lack of vacant spots within your building? I know we have one motel, one hotel motel, and that's why I ask.
Yeah, we have not done that to date. We do have other housing in Laconia, Merida.
Right. I'm just asking because where it says the Town of Ashland, I didn't want to see us paint ourselves into a corner to obligate ourselves to provide housing that's not available.
Yeah, I think the obligation is on us.
Okay.
To abide by the Uniform Relocation Act and.
Thank you.
Yes.
Also, following up with what Harold's saying, school's about to start, there are several schooling. How are you making arrangements for them to continue with this schooling here?
So we don't anticipate starting the construction of this project until next spring. So while there's still be that same issue after next summer is over and people are still being relocated, we'll work carefully with people to make sure that their kids can get to school and have the necessary transportation or whatever. It's going to be a little bit of a complex project, but we're sort of thinking it through and gearing up so that then it's not too stressed out by the process. In the goal is to keep them on the project to the greatest extent possible. That's our number-one goal. Yep.
Anything else?
I will add to what Kendall added to what I was saying. Having four years' experience in the budget committee, my question would be, speaking of transportation, would this be an arrangement that you would obtain with the SAU? Because in our town, the SAU pays all the transportation for displaced families. So therefore, that would be a cost that would be incurred on the SAU and not the town.
So we have, we have in our project budget a line item for relocation, which sort of covers moving expenses, if we have to rent a trailer, a pod to keep people's belongings in while they're temporarily displaced, probably we'll hire somebody to actually be the point person logistically, because I don't know that we have the staff capacity. So we have a budget line item that we will make work.
Okay. The only reason I ask is in our town, tax base, school is a good portion of that, and I'd hate to see anything that we vote on or we approve to raise the tax percentage of any revenues.
I would also hate that, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes.
So I see this as an attempt to have the board formally recognize its obligation to follow federal law, I mean, because it is a federal law. So, you know, I think that if that is the intended effect, I think that, again, it is, probably would bear greater consequence if it went to warrant article. So, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing. Thank you for your comments. Now we will move to motions. I'm asking for a motion to adopt the Housing and Community Development Plan.
Go ahead.
I'll do that, I'll make that.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Given that we've already had the discussion, all those in favor of adopting the Housing and Community Development Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, now I would entertain a motion to adopt the Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, considering we've already had discussion, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor of adopting the Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So we have to approve the submittal of the application and vote to authorize the chairman to sign and submit the application. And upon approval of the CDBG grant application, authorize the chairman to execute any documents which may be necessary to effectuate the CDBG contract and any amendments thereto. So I need a motion to approve the submittal of the application, number one.
I'll make a motion to approve the submittal of the application.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
And now, could I have a motion to authorize the chairman to sign and submit the application? And on approval of the CDBG application, authorize the chairman to execute any documents which may be necessary to effectuate the CDBG contract and any amendments thereto?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck with your project. We look forward to hearing more from you.
I got this to sign tomorrow.
Okay.
Or tonight.
Okay, thank you.
If you want me to fax to you.
Then you can just email.
You'll have to, don't you?
That's good.
All right.
I don't need originals.
Okay, got it.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we can call in Chief Randall now.
We want a demonstration of the taser, too.
Yeah. Can we ask?
He said he wants to.
I heard that. Yeah. Can we vote for someone?
Point of order. I don't think that's appropriate.
I think you all received my little packet about the tasers and issues with the current tasers that we have, and the opportunity for the town to purchase. current tasers that we have and the opportunity for the town to purchase eight new tasers to replace our old ones. The old ones, as I said in my letter, are no longer supported by TASER. If something happens to them, then they will not be repaired. You'll end up purchasing a new one. The technology has changed with them. I had my TASER instructor, Sergeant Hamilton, talk to TASER about the possibility of doing a five-year contract with them to basically allow us to get the equipment that we need to do our jobs and pay for it over time. As it turns out, they came back with that it's actually cheaper if we pay for them over time than when we outright buy them.
Hmm. Interesting.
That's different.
Very.
It is different. I talked to the gentleman at TASER and I said, you know, I'm trying to figure out why is it cheaper? He says, well, the first thing is we're not going to take your old ones and trade if we just do an outright buy. We will take them and trade if you do the five-year contract with us. And it's not a lease program. The tasers are ours. They just include everything in that five-year contract with us. They have figured out that small departments like I was throughout the country have a hard time with that $11,000 purchase to outfit everybody. And they've figured out that it's easier for the towns to come up with, the first year of our contract is like $1,300, but then after that it's $2,000-something. You have the numbers.
Yeah.
It's somewhere around there.
Yeah.
Which makes it affordable for towns to provide their police departments with the proper equipment to use to do their job.
Yeah.
They like it because it's guaranteed income for them every year. So they've actually increased their revenues because they're able to have more people become part of their program with their tasers.
Okay.
I'm in front of you tonight because I would like to quote, pull the trigger on this. With authorization from the board to move forward with signing the contract to do this.
Okay.
I do have the money in my budget to take care of the $1,300. It'll come out of the PD equipment line. I forget how much is in there right now, but if you give me a second, I'll tell you. Okay. Right now, I have a balance of $1,822 in that.
Okay.
So the TASER purchase will, will take up $1,300 of that for the first year of the contract.
Okay.
And then what I will do is put it in my budget every year after that.
Okay.
And it will be a contract, so it will go into the budget every year.
Okay.
And I guess that's pretty much it.
Okay. Comments? Questions? I do have one question. Do you have, do you see any other equipment purchases that you're going to need to make this year? Is that cutting it a little close?
I don't, I don't see that coming.
Okay.
You know, when I look at my budget, I go, oh yeah, this is a, I'm on a default budget.
Yeah.
Okay. So it was extra money, but not in the, in my budget.
Yeah.
Came out better than most of the departments.
Okay. Lucky you. No, fine.
Because I got some of my lines from last year.
Yeah.
Kind of difficult to look at that, so I have to keep looking back at what I wanted in my budget line.
Right.
Actually, last year I asked for $40, $4,200, somewhere around that amount, to purchase the recording system in the, in the police department.
Right.
Okay? And, and we've had troubles getting quotes and trying to get that taken care of. I'm not going to wait around for that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I have opportunity to do this, which is going to save the town $1,400 over time.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think it financially makes sense for the town. We try to save as much money as we can. If it was more money over time, then maybe it's not a possibility, but I think financially it's a smart move.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
Does this help you any in, as far as if your equipment became antiquated, would they offer you some sort of upgrade during that term? Like if they changed models? Probably not this contract, but if you stayed with this company down the road, is this a better option for you and your man?
Yes. This is what I will tell you. There is a better, there is always a, I'm not getting the fanciest model.
I understand that.
There's another model out there, but I choose not to go that route because they have tasers that do multiple things.
I've seen the flashlights and the tasers and the pepper spray.
And so, so we're just, we're just trying to, we're trying to stay in the ballgame with getting the proper equipment for us to do our jobs, have reliable equipment to do our jobs. And, and I'm not trying to go to the top shelf, so, so I opted with this. Yeah. You know, if our, if one of these tasers goes down that we are on the contract with, they cover it. They send us another one while they repair it.
Oh, nice.
It's all covered under warranty.
Nice.
So...
The only other question I have here is, any of the batteries or their cartridges, do they have a shelf life or is it something that's indefinite?
No, they do have an expiration date on them.
Okay.
I will tell you that what we end up doing with our cartridges, we are required to burn two a year through training.
Yep.
And what we do is we burn the ones that we currently have and buy new ones so the date gets extended.
Okay.
Because the newer ones you buy expire later on.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Tasha Singer?
So this being a five-year contract, again, I'm concerned, especially since my understanding is that it's coming out of a line item. My concern is that it is akin to appropriations and again, therefore not under the purview of this board. It would, it would be better sent to warrant article.
We approve multiple-year contracts all the time. And yes, it is an appropriation, but ultimately it saves the town money. And I think it would behoove us to look in the best interest of saving money than looking for a one-time expense that we would have to find the money for. So I don't see that...
And then we'd have to wait another year.
And then we'd have to wait another year to get the warrant article. Exactly. So, you know, that doesn't concern me. But yes, Tony?
And the problem with the warrant article, and you and I discussed this, is that if I put in a warrant article for $11,290 and the people say no, then I can't buy those tasers.
That's exactly right.
We have troubles with them.
That's right.
Because no mean no when you do warrant articles.
Right.
It happened to me on a cruiser. And they said, no, we couldn't buy the cruiser. So I'm a little skeptical to do that. I don't know if people watch the news, but you know, people aren't really being that supportive of police departments. Okay? I mean, seriously, all joking aside.
No, it's not, it's not a friendly manner.
And I'm going to tell you, I'm here to look out for the public and the safety of the citizens of Ashland, but also the guys that work for me.
Right.
And this is an important tool that we carry every day, and we don't use it a lot. But when it comes time that we need to use it, I want to have it there so we can use it.
Yeah.
Okay? So it's about our safety. Yeah, we're going to save money luckily, but it's about the police department and its personnel's safety.
Exactly.
So, that's where I stand on that thing.
Any other questions? Comments?
In question, I guess I would look at it this way, to add to Tasha Singer's comment. Your contract you have before us, does that have a timeframe where it is obsolete? Did they give you a three-month window, six-month window, something that would make?
Right now, they've extended it for me to go to...
I know everything increases in price.
September 30th.
Okay. Thank you.
So if I don't pull the trigger by September 30th, then...
Please don't.
Price goes up.
Well, my guess is the price is going to go up and they probably won't, they won't be having this deal.
Yeah.
It'll be different. So I just want to get it taken care of as soon as I can.
Thank you.
Okay. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the request by Chief Randall to purchase the new TASER on a five-year contract?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. DPW Director.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
DPW Director, crack sealing of Highland Street.
Yeah, I sent you guys a memo that entails details of what we're going to do with it. So it's roughly 0.8 miles of the section of Highland Street that we own. And it's, just like it says, it's crack sealing the major cracks in the road.
Yeah.
$7,600, we just want to put it up there and get approval before we start the project.
My only question is, I assume that this is more of an urgent need because, as you know, the state has agreed to help us fix that road at an 80% grant, but that's not till 2020.
Right.
Yeah, I don't like to spend money if we don't have to, but I just need to know that this is something that's going to help us bridge the gap between now and then.
Yeah, it'll help preserve the road because any, any kind of water that gets in those cracks is going to make them wider and wider and wider.
Yeah.
And the longer you put off fixing that crack, the worse it gets.
When will the work be done?
Tim had actually scheduled it for October.
Okay.
But those guys are all at the mercy of the weather, so that could be put off a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
It's been a lot of rain this year, so tentatively October, but I haven't got a firm date from the contractor yet for that.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
Yes.
Can I comment?
What is your name?
I don't know.
Could you please state your name for the record?
This is actually the town-owned section, so it has nothing to do with the 820.
Oh, okay.
This is from where Witten Woods is, all the way up to Albrook Road.
Yeah, well, I think that the arrangement is they're going to do the whole road, so then they turn it all over to us.
Yeah, but they're only going to go as far as Witten Woods.
Oh, okay.
Because that's where the state section starts.
Okay.
So it's got nothing to do with the section that's going to be crack sealed.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Anything else? In that case, I will entertain a motion to approve the crack sealing for Highland Street.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with the provision that you specify where it's coming from, but the, you know, that the money is coming out of that line.
Summer maintenance line.
It's, it's coming out of the summer maintenance line?
Summer maintenance.
Okay. So we'll tack that on to the proposal?
Second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think it has to be done. It sounds like I've talked to Mr. Moore today. One of the things that I expressed to Mr. Moore, and I've expressed on multiple occasions relative to other projects, is it would be great if we could find a way to include volunteers. I know, I know that, I'm told, you know, consistently it's impossible, but I don't think it's impossible. I hope that we can find, moving forward, some way to include volunteers. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Huh? What? Did you have another comment?
You didn't ask if there's any more comments, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Harold. I didn't mean to.
It's all right.
Step on your toes.
It's all right. Used to. Not from you, but...
Okay.
My question is, you know, we have the project also for the parking lot at the town hall. Is there any way they can schedule those subsequently and save any monies or any transportation of equipment?
From what I understand, we have an issue with that and we're going to discuss that under, you know, old business or, you know, light board items because...
I don't think they do seal coatings.
Yeah, that wasn't crack sealing, the seal coating.
Maybe just does the crack sealing.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Would they also be...
But, good point, Harold.
Only reason I ask is we just accepted the funds from the state. If there's some monies there, that might be a good place for that to come from.
Well, that's for next year, though.
Okay.
No, you can use it this year.
Oh, you can use it this year.
This year.
Pass the end by 2018. It can be used yesterday.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I mentioned, it's a big holiday.
Yeah, is there, we now have a motion on the floor to approve the crack sealing on Highland Street specifying that the money is to come out of our summer maintenance line. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Let us know, Craig, how it's going.
Okay.
Old Business Project List.
Did you, I, okay, to pass if you want 150th and 4th of July folks to go.
Oh, okay. Certainly.
You're welcome.
I did send a rough agenda to you of our update status.
Yep.
And it also had an attachment of the souvenir items that we've already ordered.
Okay.
License plates have been ordered, not been received. We reserved a spot and the memorial, memorial park for the townwide yard sale to start selling, hopefully, maybe the license plates up there here, but definitely the books that we have and also the mugs, the pens, and the Christmas ornaments that we've ordered.
Okay.
We're now working on a calendar, a 2018 calendar that we hope to have done by then as well.
Okay.
That will have pictures that are not in the victorial book that we're currently selling as well. We've now sold 37 of the victorial books to date. I don't know if any of you have seen.
I have, and I wish that more people could see them.
I should probably should bring one.
Yeah, definitely. I had, had talked to Kendall about it, and I said you should have a display one somewhere because they, they're very impressive.
I do know of the town.
And I keep meaning to buy one.
Is there one at the town hall?
There's one at the town hall. But I, yes.
Town hall, one at Dots.
Oh, it's one at Dots.
And the library.
And the library.
Oh, okay. So I would encourage everybody to go look at them because they're, they're quite nice. Yeah. Yeah.
You did a really great job. And then in terms of the Civil War Ball, we did get a, I worked with a Civil War continium, I worked with a Civil War cantillion out of Pennsylvania.
Okay.
That does Civil War Balls all the time, and they have sent me a DVD. I'm working with Megan Francis, who's a local dance instructor.
Okay.
Who is willing to do some, give lessons next year, probably around June.
Okay.
So it'll be kind of fresh in all our minds. And so I'm gonna be getting her the DVD to look over and decide which dances she would like to do. There's also Grand March in there, how to do the Grand March.
Okay.
So we're working on that one. I'm also working with a group called Heart Tax, which is a Civil War fiddler group that did a program for the Historical Society a couple of years ago. I'm trying to see if they're interested in doing the Civil War Ball. The only problem is they're not used to large venues, and we're looking at, right now, we've reserved two rooms at the Common Man Inn, because I don't wanna have it too small. I'd rather err on the side of having too much room and then finding out I don't need it.
Yeah.
So we may end up going to a DJ, which may be easier because then Megan can work more with them and control the flow of the music and stop it when she needs to, you know, to start over a dance or something like that. So that would be a possibility.
Okay.
In terms of the parade, I've contacted a number of baton twirling groups in the south part of the state. I've written letters to the New Hampshire Firefighters Drum and Pipe, the Sixth New Hampshire Infantry Company E, the Fifth Regiment, New Hampshire Volunteers, the First New Hampshire Regiment, the Royal Eagles Alumni Group, the Baker Valley Band, and the Sammerton Town Band. I've had no responses from any of those yet. The ones I have received responses from are Sparky the Dog, Smokey the Bear, Windsor the Owl. The Matta Talk Drum Band out of Waterbury, Connecticut, which is the oldest US pfeif and drum. And they're the ones that come holding us once a year.
Yeah, I've seen them.
The New Hampshire Police Pipes and Drum, which plays at the Sandwich Fair every year. The Machachos Drum and Bugle Club out of Manchester. There was a big thing on Channel 9 about them. It's an amazing group. The Beck Test Shriners Mini Chopper Unit.
Say that three times, Scott.
I know. The Beck Test Mini Car Patrol. So those are all confirmed.
Okay.
But now, I'm focusing on the utility pole banners, because I would really like to have those all sold and in place by December 1st. I'm trying to really spread out my, our fundraisers so that if we do that by December 1st, and then probably by March 1st, do, we wanna do a brochure and map kind of thing, and then also the banners at the ballpark. So I wanna have everything spread out and early enough so that businesses can plan. So I didn't email to Charlie. I wanna see if there's an existing list of the donors that we have on the utility poles now.
I don't know if there is one.
So I may have to just drive around.
You must.
Harold, I don't have any list, but I can tell you can contact Jay at JD Designs.
She would know.
Yeah.
That's what I'm referring to.
Oh, okay. That's what I was doing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah? Perfect. Then the last item was that we had gotten a chance to do. We went and did the River Walk Park, which was very interesting.
No comment.
And then I realized, going through the minutes for tonight of the agenda, that one of the items on your project list is the River Walk Maintenance. And I was talking to Craig, and I'm wondering if that might be something we could, if we decide to go there for the Bell Monument, that could kind of coordinate it, because I hate to have some certain thing, you know, too much done, and then we find out we're gonna have to dig that up or something. We noticed the tree at the end seems to be dead, for one thing. And we're thinking, if you're gonna do a monument there for Bell, it might be good to have it near the beginning of it, so we can watch it or see it, as opposed to back too far, it might get vandalized. So we may have to lose one of those parking spots. I haven't done a walk with the day pockets, I was gonna be proposing the actual memorial. We haven't done the dimensions on the Bell, so I'm not sure how...
So there's a lot of open questions at this point?
Exactly, yeah. But I am looking at a lot of that, so...
So at that point, you'd have to establish as far as repainting the lines, because if memory serves me right, that first spot's a handicap spot.
Exactly.
Closest spot can't be further than 35 feet from Main Street.
35 feet from Main Street?
Or from the center, from the center line for 80 compliance. I know that that strip of businesses there had an issue previously with non-access to that spot, and their argument was that the nearest spot that the person could use was further than 35 feet from the center line.
Okay, from the center line of Main Street or the center line of Mechanic Street?
Mechanic Street doesn't have a center line.
Mechanic Street?
No. It'd be from Main Street.
But could be a center line of Mechanic Street?
It'd have to be Main Street. For the Main Street businesses, 35 feet from the center line.
Even though it's side parking?
Yes, because it's a state-owned road, and the state owns every 35 feet, so therefore the first accessible parking lot has to be 35 feet, has to be the closest spot. So it can't be any greater than 35 feet. It's always, if you go measure that, I believe it's about 31 and a half. We measured it when we walked, that was one of the people that walked that River Walk to see what was accessible and what had to come out.
Okay.
So I would just be concerned about being too far from Main Street as far as putting that there. I do agree with you as far as vandalism, because we have had signs stolen from Memorial Park subsequently, like every other day for the last couple of months, so I would have that concern.
So would it be possible to put, like, the handicap parking first and then the monument?
No, I'm just saying, make sure you measure it so that you're within 80 compliance. I hate for us as a board to sign something that's not for one.
No, no, we shouldn't.
And I'm not adding.
Right.
We need to have all the parameters before we finalize this.
Exactly.
But it's a good thing to keep in mind.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's my anticipation, is we finally get further down the road, but at the same time, excited and wanting to go ahead with that project and maybe also coordinate it if it looks like that's gonna be a possibility.
Yep.
Thank you.
So any questions on where we are?
Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
Were you looking for a specific motion on anything?
No, just updating the board's status.
No, this is just an update.
Yeah, so that if you had any questions on where we're going or what's happening.
All right, so please come back periodically and keep us updated. Thank you, thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Jane.
Okay. Now, can we go to Old Business?
Fourth of July Committee.
Fourth of July Committee.
Okay. Oh, all right, we're gonna do that first, okay, okay. Mrs. Wendelbo?
Thank you. I asked to be before you tonight, because in researching the history of the Fourth of July Committee and the reasons that it appears that they voted to go to the Heritage Commission was over insurance and the funds in the AARA account, which is, from what I understand, a part of the town's kind of independent, out of there, not a lot of oversight and control and transparency. So in looking at that, I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to consider making the Fourth of July Committee a standalone committee of the town, answerable to the Board of Selectmen and to the Treasurer. It gets much cleaner. I've researched it, and it appears that the insurance coverage would be a not issue because as a town-appointed committee, it would absolutely be covered by that. And since the funds from the Fourth of July are not of appropriation of the town, I apologize for my marriage.
Okay, no good.
Day nine. Since it's not a town appropriation, it would not be something that would lapse at the end of the year. I talked with the administrator and the treasurer, and they were sure to me that it would be a non-lapse of the fund. So it seems to me it's kind of convoluted to go through being a subcommittee of another committee whose real role is not really Fourth of July. It does have a vague reference to helping with other community events under their mission of the Heritage Commission, but I think it more appropriately belongs as a standalone. It's been in existence for many, many years independently, and it was only when these modern things, like concern about insurance came on, that it became an issue. And so the new board was elected last week. We have 13 members. There are three members of that 13 that were on the prior committee. All the other committee members resigned, officers and committee members resigned. And so we're moving forward, and we would like that to be considered. We have not had a vote of the new committee yet. I did ask them to perhaps express their wishes to you for this meeting tonight. I don't know how many of them did that. So I guess, in general, that's what I'm asking for the Board to consider us being a standalone committee. We are meeting next on September 13 at St. Mark's, and we'll take a formal vote. We did fully discuss the two different scenarios, heritage or standalone, at our meeting after we were elected. And I believe I have a majority of people that have said that they want to be standalone, but I don't wanna speak for anybody else. And I just think it's cleaner. The one thing that we did take an absolute unanimous vote on was that, yes, there are going to be fireworks next year in Ashland. I think that was the kernel that invigorated this committee, that at that June meeting, presumably 20 people showed up saying, "We're here, we're ready to step up." I don't think the Heritage Commission, Fourth of July, said they really believed that, but they showed up at the August meeting. We have the required officers in place, and so I think it just makes a lot of sense to be more than happy with any questions you may have.
Well, based on what I've heard, at this point, I think it would be inappropriate for us to act, given that you haven't had a meeting to get official approval. And as I understand it, the Heritage Commission will need to meet. We did, at one point, set that structure up, and until that's formally dissolved and agreed upon, I think it would be highly inappropriate for us to act. So I would suggest that when all of those things are done, you come back and then ask for a specific vote. And yes, I know that we can appoint an independent committee, but it's not the way it's set up right now.
Okay, can I just follow up?
Yeah.
And I understand that, but you see, the cart and the horse comes first. If we went and voted, yes, we wanna be a standalone committee, and then we came initially before the Board and you said, "No," then where are we? So what I'm asking for tonight is not a vote to make as a committee, but to express to us that, yes, if you so choose to become a standalone committee, we are willing to do so.
Susan, you had your hand raised, and you're representing the Heritage Commission?
I sought legal counsel on this.
Thank you.
The first thing that Attorney Buckley recommended, that the current setup is that you are a subcommittee of the Heritage Commission, and therefore you have to deal with the Heritage Commission first. And he recommended a public meeting that included both the Board of Selectmen and the Heritage Commission and all the subcommittee members who were wanted to talk about this. Until such time as you are recognized or not recognized by the Heritage Commission, that's the setup that you stepped into. And the second thing with the money, it is public money, as soon as it hit the Heritage Fund, by RSA, the only ones who release those funds are Heritage Commissioners.
And that...
That is what we have to sort out.
And that is...
We're not at all set up to wanna keep the money by any means.
No.
The money was purely raised for Fourth of July events. That's the only thing it's gonna certainly go for. But the logistics of how this all plays out, that when you become a town committee, standalone town committee, right now, the funds for 2018 are in the Heritage Fund.
And that's the thing we need, that's all the things we need to sort out. And therefore, again, I come back to saying, this is not the appropriate time for us to even make a vote of agreement until we hear all of the facts and all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. You know, we wholeheartedly support the Fourth of July Committee. I will say that, regardless of whether it's a standalone committee or under the Heritage Commission. And I know this has been discussed ad nauseam as long as I've been in the town, and I don't think there's any one of us that wants to see this end. And I'm thrilled that you've got that many more members, because I know that was a great concern. But I wanna make sure that we're doing things by the book so that it doesn't come back to burn us a year from now or two years from now or whatever, because as we've all learned the hard way many times, our biggest problem in this town is lack of documentation. And, you know, let's make sure we do this right. Yes, Teja Singa?
I just wanted to ask the Board, are there any other members of the Board that have some thoughts on this matter?
I do. I always seek clarity. Now, when you say that these funds, these monetary funds will be used for the July proceedings, shouldn't you state that they should be used for fireworks?
They were raised specifically for fireworks.
Well, I'm saying is...
Fireworks was part of the package, and...
I'm just not looking for two entities to be arguing, okay, we just made an open statement saying there will be fireworks. Now, if the Heritage Commission and the Fourth of July do this, and you say, "Well, we're not giving you the money for the fireworks," then that makes us a liar.
We have never said no.
I know, but you just stated that it's for, to be used for Fourth of July proceedings, which I respect, but shouldn't you make the statement that it should be used for fireworks? Because that's what it is, is the Fourth of July fireworks committee.
Parade is separate.
Yes, the parade should be separate, and therefore not mentioned in the same sentence. Right?
I guess I'd have to go back to refer to all the motions and decisions that were made for all the previous boards as to when that was formed and what the money was specifically raised for. But the previous Fourth of July Committee, the people who raised every penny of that money voted to put it into the Heritage Fund to support the Fourth of July events, which did include fireworks.
Oh, I respect that.
When it came out that it wasn't even the money that would not support fireworks into the future, it was the number of people to be able to carry on, the actual on-the-ground work to have them happen, is something that they have been putting out, better for worse, for the last four or five years.
I understand. I'm just, you know, a total facetious scenario, you know, if there was a group that only wanted the parade and the breakfast sandwich, or the breakfast, and then the fireworks got left high and dry, I just wouldn't wanna see that happen on my clock.
Well, the reason it went to the Heritage Commission is because there weren't enough people that were working on the original committee, and that's how it all came about in the first place. And we went through a lot to even have it...
It was to recognize that this event is a town event.
Yes.
And part of our heritage.
And that the AARA filled in for three and a half years to keep the subcommittee alive, not only by providing liability insurance.
They did.
By giving them a legal entity, because before that, they, even if they could afford their own insurance, they couldn't get it as a group because they were not a recognized group by the state of New Hampshire, because they had never registered to be a group.
Right.
And therefore, their bank account was not officially a bank account or a legal entity.
And that's why they gave it up.
Right. And so there are a lot of things that need to be sorted out, and your question is well taken, but that, again, brings to mind the fact that we need to sort out all of this stuff. And I think as a board, again, we can say categorically, we are in favor of the event. And however it's set up, it should be set up legally, properly. We know, you know, who's being covered for what, who's bonded for money, where the money's coming from, where its liability is, where it gets set, and I'm more than happy to do that, but we're not quite ready to do that yet. Yes?
Thank you. I hope to see the Fourth of July Committee, an independent committee, at some point. It makes, it seems to make sense, the importance of the Fourth of July in this town. It makes sense that it would be separate. But I wanna tell you that I feel that it is the respectful thing to do for the other body, the Heritage Commission, to allow you all to exercise a democratic process, to have some official severance, because I hear too often that, you know, committees are set up and they're powerless. And I wanna support the ability of, you know, commissions and committees to oversee their own work. But what I would ask this Board, my hope is, is that maybe we can discuss, throw out some recommended dates that we could possibly hold this meeting that's been suggested, so that then they could go back to their respective bodies, specifically the Heritage Commission, and perhaps meet us on one of those dates for a meeting.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Since the Fourth of July Committee appears to have voted to become part of Heritage Commission, I would think they would have the right to vote to not be part of it. I have not seen any documentation yet, and I should plan on going to the town this week to look at the records. I see no indication of when that vote was held, if a recorded vote was taken, if they had a quorum present, if they had bylaws for the Fourth of July Committee, and so on. I know that there was some...
We did vote.
...bylaws kind of passed around, but they were bylaws at, I believe, post-joining the Heritage Commission.
Kathleen, do you wanna share with us what you just handed?
I can't hear the bylaws.
Hmm, you handed the bylaws, okay, thank you.
And we did vote.
We did. Yes.
Can you read the relevant portion of the bylaws that you're hoping that we can, you know, extract from that? Is there a specific element in the bylaws? Can you read it aloud so I'm aware of what you're referring to?
Susan's the chairman, I'm not delegated to.
At the previous meeting, I had a collection of minutes from the Fourth of July Committee, the Heritage Committee, and the Ashland Area Recreation Association, which each and every time, there was a vote to join or leave, and what happened with the money, each and every time. And in January of 2016, they officially became part of the Heritage Commission. There was a transitional period because the money, we made it more complicated than it had to be. But the funds that were already raised for 2017 were expended out of one bank account, and all the funds that were raised for this company were put into the Heritage Fund. And that was also by a vote of the Fourth of July Committee and by the Heritage Commission. And then, again, you can vote to say that you don't wanna be a subcommittee anymore, but you do at least have to work with the committee that you are leaving to be, make it official that we have, the committee has yet to, the commission has yet to meet to even formally take the resignations of the previous committee that still have outstanding work to be done, which is the final financial statements and the annual report for the town report. So there are a few things that are still at loose ends, and as of yet, the commission hasn't met since this Fourth of July subcommittee meeting, that it's been formalized one way or another, that until such time as we meet and have the ability to make the decision on what all has transpired, that it's, you're still officially part of the Heritage Commission.
And I see that this is not so much an argument as to whether or not they can leave the commission.
No.
But that it's left in an orderly way, and we know that the funds are officially transferred or accounted for, and that's, I'm not asking that you don't do it or anything else, I'm just saying that our role in this is premature until that stuff is sorted out. Yes, Teja Singa?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen send a formal invitation by way of the town administrator to the Heritage Commission and the subcommittee of the Fourth of July Subcommittee, an invitation for the purpose of meeting to discuss this very issue. A date to be determined by, you know, by all of us kind of, you know, through email or something.
Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion. I have a couple of things that I think should be paramount for that. One would be the tracing and just the verification of previous years, you know, to verify the standings, you know, who were the checks written to for the Fourth of July, you know, if you're, you have fundraising and you have vendors, I mean, that would show you when you had the votes or whatnot, if they became a separate entity, obviously if the checks are cut to, they should be cut to the Fourth of July Committee, right?
No, directly to the vendor.
No, no, money's coming in. Were the checks written to the Heritage or written to the Fourth of July?
More than last year, the Heritage Fund.
Okay.
Previous to that, the ERA for the last three years prior.
Okay, so is there anything as a Board that we can lend either opinion or balance to as far to ensure that, come the end of December, that the $14,000 that the new committee is gonna have to contractually obligate themselves to, which will be before we vote on the new budget, that those monies are there?
Again, I think that it is premature for us to even be involved in this point, even to issue a meeting. I do agree, Teja Singa, that we should have a meeting, and there should be many voices in that meeting, but you have administrative business to take care of, and until that's taken care of, we shouldn't be getting into a discussion of right, wrong, or anything else. When you come to us that this is now the proposal, we've worked out the finances, then come to us, and we will ask any questions to make sure that we all have our bases covered, and take a formal vote, and it has to be a formal vote. So, my recommendation is that we wait until the Heritage Commission has met, the Fourth of July Committee has met, they have reached an agreement, and then come back to us.
Chair.
Yes.
Will you ask the board if there are any further matters of discussion on this motion, and then please call the board?
I think we are still discussing it. Are there anything else?
When does the Heritage Commission meet next? I had requested that they meet.
Excuse me, we have a roll motion right now, if you will pardon me.
My only concern is I don't want us to assume any liability if, for instance, there's fleecing somewhere. I'm not accusing anybody of anything.
No, no, I hear.
But liability is my thing. We run three businesses at home, you know, nothing that involves the town, but liability is a thing. I don't want these guys to put their sweat and tears into this, and then they go to write the check, and the money's not there.
Of course, and those are obvious valid concerns, and we will have to make sure that all of those are clear, but right now, the motion on the floor is to whether or not we should take the initiative to ask for a joint meeting with the Heritage Commission and the Fourth of July Committee, or whether we should refrain until they come to us. So, that's the motion on the floor. He's requested, yes?
It's to send an invitation.
To send an invitation.
Right, meaning that it would be on them whether or not to accept that invitation to initiate that meeting, but we are offering the invitation.
Why do we have to offer the invitation?
Well, I suppose we don't, but that's the motion.
And it would be hard just to pin down a date at this point.
I'm hoping they will contact Heritage to drive away and go to their next meeting.
Yeah.
We had already requested.
Which is September?
That we have a joint meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So, is there any more comment on the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor of sending an invitation for a joint meeting of the Select Board, the Heritage Commission, and the Board of Selectmen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, so, is there any other further motion that anybody wants to take, or do we wait to hear back from the Heritage Commission and/or the Fourth of July Committee when some of those items are taken care of? Yes, Bob?
I wasn't clear of the vote, nay.
We are opposed to issuing an invitation at this point for a joint meeting.
Thank you, that's all I wanted.
Okay.
I couldn't.
No, but thank you, okay.
Maybe other people could.
Yeah, all right.
Susan, when is the next Heritage meeting?
The 12th to 13th. Tuesday, the 12th?
Of September, okay, so it's not too far away.
Is that the same day as the Fourth of July meeting?
No, it's the day preceding.
It's the day before.
Well, couldn't they meet with us, couldn't they meet on the, when are we meeting? The 12th or the 13th?
We have to, yeah, we have to discuss that.
Remember, Tuesdays is budget nights, right?
Yeah, we have to discuss that at a later time, so.
We need a fourth block here.
Okay, so I would just request that you get back to us when you have some further resolution to let us know what we need to do. Yes, Teja Singa?
I'd just like to ask the Heritage Commission and the Fourth of July Subcommittee, is there any idea that you have as to, you know, how to move forward, you know, perhaps some other motion that we could entertain and discuss that might bring us closer to some type of resolution or?
Not the moment you have, the Board of Selectmen are not the commission, the.
We have no authority at this point.
Okay, that's what I was asking you, it was a question.
I have no problem, I mean, it's clear that we are going to request to come out from the Heritage Commission. We are not questioning that the money has been taken or inappropriately used, it is in the trust of the town, all those funds cannot be released except by the town treasurer, but if the new committee, I mean, the Heritage Commission Subcommittee of the Fourth of July Committee publicly stated on numerous occasions that they were all resigning, that they were dissolving, that there would not be Fourth of July fireworks in the future, they told the advertisers that in writing, so how they can now want to keep the Fourth of July Committee is kind of strange, but my question to you is, what if they say, no, we're not going to accept the new committee members that were elected, or no, we're not going to accept the new officers, then what do we do?
Excuse me, I have not heard anybody say that they don't want you to resign, the only concerns that I'm hearing is that we want to make sure it's done correctly and by the book. I have not heard anyone say we don't want to let them go, and we can't assume what anybody's motivation is at this point, and so I think we should wait and hear when further details are ironed out. Yes, Susan?
I'm just thinking, it just distresses me that the picture she's painting about the previous committee, that they were, they seemed to be outright wanting to kill the -- they were all tired, they had done it for years and years and years, I mean, now somebody said that they spent five hours helping with the parking, which is great to hear, because Steve Jakewood averaged 12 to 13 hours each and every day doing the parking for this event for over a decade.
Right. And I heard the same thing, Amanda Loud made a very compassionate plea for additional help, because you can understand that help burned out there.
And that's what we're doing now, if we don't have the help to carry this out, it's not going to happen.
Right.
And, I don't know, maybe some people did use the word dissolve, but it would just be that they would go dormant because nobody was picking it up.
Right, right.
And, again, we had to be somewhat of a drama queen to get the reaction that we finally got, which is what we wanted to see, and there's no way that there's any thoughts of trying to kill this thing, or withholding money, or anything of the sort.
No.
I'm just saying that the legal, the legal setup right now is the money is in the Heritage Fund. Yes, it is, it's public monies, but it is held by the treasurer only to be released on the signature of Heritage Commissioners, so we want to sort out how that money gets used to what it's supposed to be used for, with whatever permutation this ends up in.
Thank you. Yes?
Finally, are there any action items that we as a board can take to, you know, participate in this constructively? I mean, is there anything, any information that we need to gather, anybody that we need to speak to as a board?
You can go to the meetings.
Yeah. Again, I'm waiting to hear from them before we take any action, because it's not under our authority at this point, so I would, you know, say Lee is absolutely right, if he wants to go to the committee, go right ahead. Yes, Kathleen?
Both of them.
Our duties are defined by RSA, not by town.
Right, right, thank you. Okay, I think it's time to move on.
Your question tells what to do.
All right, are we done with new business now?
Our duties are defined by RSA, not by the local.
Okay, old business, project list.
Okay. Okay. I'll leave. It's my turn.
That's what? Your turn.
You have the floor, Charles.
Okay, so, the NHDOT TAP grant, Friday was our end date to receive the RFQs, we received seven RFQs from engineering firms. Previously, we discussed about me narrowing them down, I don't know, is seven too many for the board, or what's your thoughts? I thought we were going to receive maybe 10 or 12, that's why I would say I narrowed it down, but seven's kind of a little.
I think seven is too many, but what I would suggest is maybe that we take, when do we have to have this decided?
Um, we, well, we don't have a technical date, but we'd like to get it, put it this way, we'd like to get in contract negotiations in October, or by October, so you have about a month.
What I would suggest, I mean, most of this reading is way above my head, I'm not an engineer, but I would recommend that we all take a quick look at these RFQs and come back to the board at our next meeting with a recommendation of narrowing it down if we, you know, think that there are three or so that really bear further scrutiny, rather than trying to sort it out now.
That's what we did with Thompson Street.
Yeah, yeah, so, that is my recommendation, is everybody okay with that?
Sounds good.
Rather than trying to debate it now, because I haven't read them, I don't think anyone else has.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so we will, your homework is to take a look at these over the next couple of weeks, and when we have our next meeting, just come with your recommendations as to your thoughts about one versus the other.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, no, you mean, how many we're supposed to interview?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we have a grading process.
No, 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 I don't mean to pick one.
There's a selection process.
I just mean to say, I think that this is one we should interview.
Okay, yeah.
No, 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 we're not ready.
There is a selection process that NHDOT wants to see.
Of course.
That would come after this initial process.
Yeah, all right. Thompson Street, water and sewer replacement application that we had with Clean Water State Revolver Fund, I went to the public hearing, we should receive something within, I suspect, the next couple of days, that our application was accepted, and to be clear with the public, our application was accepted, we weren't awarded any funds, town meeting still has to vote and give the board the authority to enter into a financing agreement with the DES.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
No updates on GIS?
Question with that, are there any standing action items on that? Is it active, or what's happening with that?
No, it's active, the only, basically, it has to go to town vote.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was going to the GIS.
The GIS.
Yeah, the GIS.
Yeah, I think we have to come up with Plan B and probably go to Warren Article.
My thought was, on this, was whether or not we wanted Cardiographics to come in to present to the board about GIS.
Doesn't hurt.
Whether or not you want to ultimately send it to Warren Article.
It doesn't hurt to get the information, and I'd be more than happy to have them come and present, because we need to pick this up somehow, some way.
Now, when you speak of having a new person come in, the work that we're going to be having done, or will have done prior to that, one being the Culvert inventory, and, you know, also, the, I think the other one was, there was some bridge stuff that we were going to document, whereas, I think it was about four or five months ago, we discussed the bridge on Winter Street, and we said, wouldn't it be nice to have key points of places around town that we've talked about that never got anything fixed on? So, perhaps if we have the Culvert plan done prior to that, that'll be one last thing that the new corporation will have to have done.
Or something they can just plug in, yeah.
Exactly, I mean, it's.
So, I definitely have them, we'll give them what we've got, or tell them what we've got, and see where we can go from there.
I've already, yeah, I've already given them what we have.
All right, fantastic.
We may and may not be able to use some of it.
Okay.
It's a pretty big, well, Eli was there for the meeting that we had initially with CAI Technologies, and it is quite an undertaking, so.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Be prepared.
All right, it's posted.
Is this something, I know that we've been working on it for a while, but I was looking at the taxation for next year's reevaluation in 2018, I own property in a few towns, and one of them had this implemented a year and a half ago, and lo and behold, I owned less land than I thought I did. So, is this something that we should plan on, or try to allocate the funds to have it complete before that study, so it can either benefit the citizenry, or benefit us to have logistics, hard paper right there for our people?
It would benefit the town, one of the comments that was made during our presentation was that it's a three-year project, they would take three years to complete, and basically, they go through every property in town to get everyone on an even playing field.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, we're already 10 years behind the curve, so we've got a lot of catching up to do, and we need to figure out a way forward.
Did you want, Eli, do you want any comments on that? You were there too, with CAI.
The information that we have in hand is not in the most usable condition for what the town needs. Going with an established firm, Cardiographics in this case, they've done several website based productions, which we seem to want to go to. They've done, they're top-notch.
Okay.
They know what they're doing, they gave us different price points.
Sure.
That's for sure, yeah.
And for what is useful for in-house, what is useful for the web are two different, it's been very distinct price points.
Yeah, yeah, but you'll see in the presentation.
Okay.
It's a good presentation, gives you a total understanding about GIS map and the different layers of information that the public can use for land uses in our community.
Great.
Okay, so, no updates on the goal setting, the LW Packard mill.
Was the goal setting, is that still an active project item, or can we remove that?
That's up to the board, did you want me to take that one off, or how did you want to proceed with that goal-setting project?
What more do we need to do with it at this point? We've got a report, that's what we contracted to do.
Revisit it every once in a while.
Yeah, I think we should revisit it every once in a while and see if there are any of those things that are on there that we want to undertake as the item for the project list.
I think this would be something, it'd be a good time to revisit, this would be following March election, so that anybody new to the board can come about face and know what they're dealing with.
Absolutely, good suggestion, Harold, thank you.
Chairman, my recommendation is that we remove it from the project list, but allow, you know, half the town administrator, keep it in mind for March.
That's fine, that's fine.
All right, I'll remove it. The LW Packard mill site, Nobus submitted to DES about the field task work plan, did you want to speak further, Fran, on that?
Nope, I think we need to wait and hear back, we did, I'm going to call on Susan later, because we did have a wonderful meeting with the Economic Development Group, and Brownfield's update and the importance of it, and I will talk more about that if Susan will indulge me and help me out with this later, but it's very exciting, I'm very pleased with the possibilities moving forward, so.
Yeah, so what I would say on this is, the next step is definitely moving forward.
Yeah.
It was approved by DES and LRPC, now they submitted their work scope to get one step further along.
Yeah.
Riverwalk maintenance, it's the hope that DPW will begin work by the end of the year on that, the, no updates on the building fire alarm system?
Mr. Smith, I had a question about that, it says installation in coming weeks, what is coming weeks, like, when are we going to?
That was the previous update, they were hoping, when I wrote that, I could probably update that.
Well, I'm sure this fall is, I mean, it's, the way I understand it, and, you know, conservation people, please help me, we have some invasive species there.
No, I'm talking about, no, we're talking about the fire alarm.
Oh, the fire alarm, I'm sorry.
Fire alarm.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, when I wrote it, it was the coming week, so the, initially told me by the end of August.
Okay, all right.
Have you had an update, like, confirming that it's going to be by the end of August?
Well, we talked to Mango on another topic, and I know that the person who's doing it's been out of the office, so.
Because, I mean, we have a, we have a contract with them right now, right, for them to install that, so it seems like we want to make sure that that gets done.
It's going to get done, I guess I can follow up with Mango to see when.
Just get us a date.
Where they are with it.
Yep.
The Norm De Wolf Day Volunteer Recognition, we received the granite stone.
It's beautiful. We met a couple of weeks ago, and thanks to Craig Moore, we came up with more details on our work plan, we're still scheduled for September 11th with a rain date of September 12th. Part of that discussion involved the seal coating of the parking lot, the parking lot currently has several cracks in it, and there are weeds growing through the cracks, and we can permanently eliminate the weeds with a blowtorch or whatever, no roundup, but then we're still left with the cracks. So, one of the things that Craig Moore suggested was that we have the whole thing seal-coated, so I think you have an update for us, Craig, some information that you've got on that.
Yeah, I met with three different contractors that can do the work for us, one of them, you have all, I gave you all the information, and it's a little late, but the last one I got today, they're like busy with all the weather and stuff, so.
Yeah.
One of the companies that I've dealt with in the past, actually said I would not seal coat this, he really didn't want to do it, but I said, well, can you do me a favor and give me a quote anyway? He'll do the work, but it's not going to last, and that's due to the fact that it's so old, once the big rocks start to show through, there's nothing left for the seal coating to adhere to, so at that point, within a year, it's going to wear off, and what his product he put down would make his company kind of look bad in the public's eye.
Okay, yeah.
The other two didn't offer up any information, said sure, we'll do it, and didn't care, they are the cheaper people anyway, so if you just want to make it look good for a year or two, then I would go with the lowest quote, and it'll need to be done, but certainly, the guy that gave us the biggest quote gave me the most information, things that I didn't know prior to this, why they seal coat, why it works, why it doesn't, he recommends paving it, put an inch of pavement over it.
Yeah.
Be done with it, then maintain it.
Yeah, what would that cost?
I don't have a figure on that, but I'm guessing 10, maybe 10 grand, we could probably get a quote for you if you want to go that way, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be nice, I mean, part of our goal was obviously for this day, but this day is not going to happen, our question was, is it worth our time, you know, putting crack sealer on it, and I think that would look terrible, frankly, maybe for the moment, we just see if we can get rid of the weeds, I think we need to meet again, is it worth the expense of seal coating it if we can then come forward with a proposal next year to pave the whole thing? It's long overdue, I believe.
Well, if you were to seal coat it and crack seal it, that will seal the cracks, which will make the pavement on top last longer.
Okay.
So, it's not going to be a lost cause.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
If you sealed up. If you sealed up all, it made everything nice and tight, as you could, it wouldn't be, you know, because if I paved over that, I still got the cracks underneath that are eventually gonna sag in.
Frost is gonna make it walk.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So, seal coating, it's gonna make everything tighter.
Okay.
Of course, the best thing to do to that parking lot would be grind it up and start over, because it is in bad shape.
It is in bad shape.
Which is, of course, more cost, but...
And part of our urgency is also, we're coming up on our 150th, and the town hall is sad, it's very sad, and I didn't realize how sad it was until we started walking around the building, which is why we're doing this Volunteer Day, focusing on that town hall, and just trying to make it look, I mean, this is our town, it represents our town, and it's kind of sad, so I think we need to decide whether or not, if it's not a lost cause, if it's an investment...
I think it would help in the end, I mean, it would seal everything up and make it tight, if you did decide to put some money into it next year in budget for it.
Okay.
Now, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, now, whereas our parking lot is parallel to Cottage Street there, if you were to bring an inch of pavement in, your transition from the parking lot to Cottage Street would be an inch tall. Now, having that being said, Mr. Smith earlier stated that our funds that we received from the D O T can be expended yesterday, it would be who of us to consider the fact that if you did pave that short spans of Cottage Street up to the rear of the building, you would in fact be using those funds to repair or improve your town roads. So, that's something that we may want to think of, because if you do add an inch there of pavement, the transition is, it's gonna be, well, it's not gonna be good to plow it, and it's gonna expedite the wear and tear on Cottage Street.
What they would do with that, they'd put a transition, you know, they'd grind it like they did when they paved Main Street.
Yeah.
So, but like, when you go down over Depot Street, there's no bump, they just grind it.
Right, I'm just saying, because that's, historically, that's the most used portion of our town-owned buildings, as you'd, if you look in the parking lot, they're in and out all day long, and that's something we should preserve. My other thought is that, a concern, that if we, like you said, if the thought process was that it was a Band-Aid, I would be leery of that, because we discussed it the last meeting, as far as splash up onto the bricks, that we would have, that would be a great incurred cost later.
Yeah.
If it wasn't done correctly, therefore, I would steer you away from the thought process of cheaper is better. Because to have someone come in and repair bricks that have been, well, defaced by asphalt will cost you almost as much as it would cost you to crackseal that parking lot.
Yes, Craig.
The splashing, I did, I talked to all of them about that. Everything up to the town office building would be done hand by hand.
Okay.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Well, all three of them guaranteed there wouldn't be anything on the brick.
Okay.
So, Craig, if we were to vote to expend these funds, of these three, which is your recommended, recommendation?
Well, certainly, the guy that was most expensive, he does, they're the high, they're all high-end equipment.
Yeah.
So, they're the Cadillac provider, but if you certainly are going to look into paving that, which is probably what it really needs.
Yeah.
I'd go with the low end, just to get it done and make, and it's gonna look good.
Okay.
It's gonna be restrite, all the parking lots will be repainted, and it'll look nice.
So, this is Andrade seal coating, and the amount of $1,917.74. Can I ask the two members here from our little subcommittee on the Volunteer Day, what your thoughts are on this?
I agree with Greg. We want, part of the whole process is have people stop looking at the town office, and it's, it is, it's sad.
It is sad.
And, this is what my husband recognized, and this is why he adopted this garden, because he said that was the only bright, attractive venue that would, yeah, that welcomed anybody who may come to our town office to do business. So, and then, the other things we had discussed was painting the portico of the front door.
Yeah.
150th is coming up, and this is all, not only curb appeal, but there are some serious issues with some of the woodwork on the top and around the bricks.
We did agree to go out for bids, to have somebody look at those, at that...
Portico.
Not the portico, but the...
The returns of the fire.
Yeah, the returns, because they're rotted, and, you know, we needed, and I don't know, Charlie, if you have looked into that?
I was gonna speak to that a little bit, but I can now, if you want me to.
You might as well, right now.
Well, we've also looked into repairing the windows, and basically, it's difficult to find a contractor right now.
I'm sure, well, it's been a problem in town.
We talked to two companies that do preservation specifically for old historic buildings, one walked away, and another requested that the windows get removed by us and delivered to his office in Portsmouth.
Oh.
And, yeah, the quote was like 18,000, there are only six windows.
Now, is it merely, is it merely the woodworking part of it that needs to be maintained or repaired, or is it actually the glass itself?
They need double panes and all kinds of other things to make the energy efficient, but we have to keep the same look.
So, I talked to another company, sorry, and they didn't call me back, and another company hasn't called me back. Like I said, basically, these contractors are really, really busy right now. I got told by one that if they weren't so busy, would probably get more offers, but they're months out, so...
Yeah, I had no illusions that we were gonna get this work done in the near future, so I think we need to just keep plugging, look for somebody, especially those returns, because that just continues to deteriorate, so, yes, Kathleen?
I don't think probably most people even realize that that's not glass that's on the outside of the windows, that's the glasses.
I know.
And it's, it's become etched and clouded, the windows above the door, the same thing, so, I don't know, windows were put in.
Yeah, and the moisture gets trapped, and it deteriorates the windows inside.
Now, what I was going to speak of is, just so you know, that in town, if you did obtain a contractor, we have a woodworker that fabricates all of those entities, you have the Customs Brothers right down behind Moppel, and they've been around for 105 years, and their specialty is restoring old woodworking, mostly cabinetry, but a lot of business in Boston, they do a lot of work on historic buildings, so you might want to inquire within with those guys.
Certainly for the windows, you need to look at them, but, but again, for these returns, I don't think there's a historic aspect to it, I think it's more...
No, but the windows, some of that dovetailing and stuff is hard to come by.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes.
I feel like we're skipping around, I understand why, because it's kind of all goes into one, but, one overall topic, but I was wondering, can we bring to a conclusion this discussion about the seal coating?
Yes, I would wholeheartedly approve of that. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation, or Mr. Moore, for $1,917 with Andrade seal coating to have the town parking lot done?
I'll make said motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, since we just got the information, I'm not inclined to support the motion, I understand that there is a desired date to have this stuff done by for the Volunteer Recognition Day, however, I see that more as a matter of planning, if that would have been planned earlier in the season, it would have been done in a timely fashion. I don't, otherwise, I don't feel that this is urgent, therefore, I'm not, I can't support it until I have an opportunity to thoroughly look over the documentation.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor of approving the expenditure of $1,917.74 to have the parking lot seal-coated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Craig, if you can let us know when they can schedule that, appreciate it, thank you very much. So, I think that's all the update I have. Again, my thanks to Craig for his input, when we had our last committee meeting, he had a ton of ideas, and volunteered a lot of work, and we're very grateful for that, Craig. So, we'll talk to you some more, I think, as we get a little bit closer, it's getting closer, isn't it? Yeah, we need to meet again. Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
Electricity Planning Commission, I think, you guys know where? Yeah, they're all done doing the field work, now it's just a matter of consolidating the analysis, data, and analyzing, and submitting to us.
Great.
Mr. Smith, when do you anticipate receiving the report?
They haven't given me a date, prior, they said the end of August.
Okay.
Do you think we could subsequently plan our meeting for the G I S after we receive that compiled information?
I don't think it would really affect it.
It shouldn't, this is just for information, Harold, you know, it's important information, but we're not gonna make any decisions at this point on G I S, I don't think.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Telecommunications, the Next Generation, it's a subcontractor for First Light, actually ran the wire from the telephone poles into the building, now we just wait for First Light to come and install their box and connect up the fiber optic cable.
Excellent.
Mr. Smith, when do we anticipate that happening?
It was just completed last week, so whenever First Light calls and schedules.
Have they given you some ideas, it's gonna be several weeks, several months?
October initially, I think, was on the, on their, you know, form that they gave us, first week in October, but they're a cable company, so they said when we can get there.
Thank you.
No updates on Whipple House, or personnel policy, the Ashland Electric Department, the new building is leaking water into the D P W's salt shed.
All right, you should review that line. It's a lot of salt that's leaking, that's leaking, it's out.
I didn't know if this is something you want the liaison to follow up with, the...
We definitely need to follow up on this, and this, you know, there was a huge flood, and I went down and witnessed it, at Tim's request, and we, as a select board, have asked, last, when was it?
November 16th, we asked for their vegetative swale.
Addition to the swale, and that has still not been done, and that's contributing to the leak, yes, it should go to the liaison, but it's an urgent matter, it's costing us money.
We also have to contemplate that before we order more salt, because the more salt you put in there, the more you're gonna lose until that's fixed.
Craig, do you have anything you want to contribute to this?
Well, right now, there's no more, it hasn't been a problem today.
Okay.
It was caused by the freezing of ice, and, once it was frozen over that stone, then, when the thaw happened, and that's when it was like a river going through the salt.
Yeah.
So, even that, even our heavy rains haven't, to this day, washed into the salt shed.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, but it's, you know, that vegetative, it's summer, I'm sorry, this is the time to plant stuff, so...
So, then, there's, we're supposed to have another meeting, I think, anyway.
Okay, yes.
I just, since I'm the liaison, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update, I went to the last meeting, and they are discussing it, options to, you know, to deal with this situation. I would remind you that I will be out of town the 22nd through September 1st, so I know that they contacted me and mentioned that their meeting for tomorrow evening is canceled, however, they anticipate holding a meeting on August 29th, but I will still be out of town. So, my recommendation to the board is that if you feel this is an urgent matter, which understandably it is, I would recommend that the board appoints a substitute liaison for the purpose of attending that meeting to discuss this.
I think that's a great idea. Does anybody want to volunteer?
I'm gonna be gone during that week, too.
I'm gonna be gone as well, Casey, Harold, would either of you want to go?
Which day is it?
The 29th is a Tuesday, I believe.
That is a night that we have figured on doing budget, haven't we, Charlie, on Tuesdays is our budget night, the 29th?
Yeah.
Okay, something we need to consider as well.
Perhaps we should...
Do you want to ask Craig to go?
Huh? Craig, is there any opportunity for you to go to the electric commission meeting?
I'm gonna go, yes.
All right.
Yeah, I'll be there.
So, please express our concerns about that leak, because obviously, your firsthand knowledge of it would be very helpful.
Yep, I'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
My other concern about this item, since we had brought up the fact of the vegetative swale, we, the Conservation Commission chair had received a letter from the electric department in regards to this building, saying that they're going to spray Roundup in the month of July. We have not got any, you know, paperwork saying that they had, subsequently, it's still standing dead down there, but these are the type of things that perhaps we should keep an eye on.
Yeah, sure.
That's something that's just supposed to be permitted, it's not something that should be sprayed by an employee. It's obviously Roundup dead, I mean, it's bright orange.
Yeah.
It was done, whether or not it was best management practices.
Yeah.
I don't know, but I know that that paperwork's been distributed to every department head in the town about a year and a half ago. So, the other thing that I noticed is there seems to be some sort of catwalks set up in the area we asked for the vegetative swale, so that they can gain access to the garage buildings that they said they weren't going to use anymore.
Okay.
So, that may be a primex liability, if you're balancing on a six-inch wide beam, carrying things out of a garage that's tearing over a bunch of rock swales.
Okay.
So, other than that, that's about the only concern I have down there, huh?
Stay tuned for further updates, thank you, Harold.
The town office building, I think I just addressed that.
Yes, you did.
And that's all that I have for updates.
There is a couple questions.
Yes.
The billing permit fees, I see that's on our project list, is that still current, are we considering it, or what are we doing with that?
I don't know if the rest of the board wants this, we addressed it before, we tabled it.
We tabled it because there was some confusion about, yes, Susan, please.
Well, the planning board bound to get back to you, saying that once again, you're gonna have to address it in one form or another.
Yep.
On the warrant articles this year that should be awarded correctly to get the results you want.
Absolutely.
Because at the moment, what stands in the written regulations don't apply.
Yeah.
And there was nothing voted in to replace it.
Right, so we have some work to do before we put together the warrant. Yes, we appreciate your input.
So, in the meantime, it's not clear that you can, you can even amend the fee, because you don't, you don't have a standing process at the moment.
Right, so it's still on hold?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, acceptance of the Ames Brook Camp Brown sewer line?
Yes, we, the board has basically one of two options, ask the town to vote on acceptance, or you can hold two public hearings if we decide to accept.
Why two?
Because that's what's under the per RSA for real estate.
One's the preliminary, and one is the actual voting, or the actual approval, if I recall correctly last time.
And if we ask the town to vote on it, we have to wait till March? And I think that's kind of foolish, frankly, when they need to decide pretty soon what they're gonna do with the sewer line, so I would, I would make a motion that we hold public hearings as soon as possible. Alan, do you have anything you'd like to contribute to this? Oh, sorry, Harold, you seconded it?
I would second that merely for the fact that I know that Vern is a snowbird, and he may not be here in March.
Alan, you have any comments?
I don't have anything to contribute now, I'll see what your discussion is, maybe.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to authorize Charlie to implement public hearings for the acceptance of the sewer line? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, Alan, you'll take that back to Water and Sewer, thank you, okay. North Ashton Road car inquiry?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'd like to speak to that, so I'm just bringing it to the attention of the board, a resident brought it up, they're basically, it sounds like they're following up to see what the status is, as you can see in my, the memo that I wrote to, I just recommended that we consider sending them a letter explaining where we're at, at this point, unless there's, you know, something further that the board wants to do.
I don't think we, Tony, please, speak up, is there anything?
What do you want me to say?
You know, it's been an ongoing problem.
This is those cars out there?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know what you've done for advice from anybody, but that road was taken when I-93 was taken.
Yeah.
So, the right-of-way of the road, it was a fee taken, so that's town property in there.
Okay.
Okay? You can keep people off town property. You know, I hate to say, put up, you know, no parking signs, no parking within the right-of-way, or whatever, to keep them out of there, but they need to be a little more, you know, community-friendly without ripping their cars apart and stuff out there on the hill.
Yeah.
If you go up and look at that, you're gonna see that they've disturbed the earth, so you may have a problem when it rains, because they destabilized everything.
Yep.
You know, this, it's a civil matter, it's not a criminal matter at this point, you know, I just don't know how you get across to them that you don't want them out there working on the cars and parking there.
What is your recommendation in terms of giving us the most authority to take care of it? Would a letter help at this point, or should we move to no parking signs, so that you have the authority to take it?
I'd get an opinion from your attorney, I don't know.
I don't know.
No.
I already have.
How about LGC? What did they say?
The attorney said that you would have to go to court and get an injunction. This is a long, drawn-out process.
I'm not convinced that's true, if it's our property.
Yes, because, yeah, the injunction is because the property owner is not abiding to prior letters.
So we've sent letters.
We go over and check on a regular basis.
Well, I guess my question would be, if it's town-owned property, couldn't we issue a writ of trespass?
Or put up no parking signs.
Let's just keep in mind that driveway does travel from the right-of-way of the road to their property.
I understand.
And, but everybody's driveway does. And all you're asking them to do is stay within the confines of their driveway. I mean, I just don't know what's so difficult about this. You know, this is where people start to get frustrated with, what can we do about it? Okay? Fence it off.
My concern that I would bring forth, not personal, I would look at it as an environmental impact, is, like you said, they're working a lot of vehicles there. You know, being on the Conservation Commission, I can tell you that I've noticed the earth has gotten quite dark around there. And we own that earth that's quite dark now. And perhaps there's some kind of liability that's going to be incurred later, but also you'll find that that's within the right-of-way of the highway. It's within 500 feet of the highway, therefore it's within the right-of-way of the state as well.
I'm going to tell you that the right-of-way there is roughly 75 feet from the center line of the road. The monuments dictate the edge of it. And I'm going to tell you that when that property was subdivided back in the day, I worked for another surveyor at the time, and I know that that berm, the line is on the other side of that berm in front of the road there. So...
Are you referring to the berm where the motorhome is parked now? That there was altered terrain?
Okay, yeah, I, you know, I'd have to go look at it again, but yeah, the way they, where they're parking their stuff is, I know, if you look at the survey plan that was done, you're going to see that the corner of their property between the condos and their property is very close to that garage.
It is.
Okay?
So what would be the issue? I mean, we have addressed this with them before, as I recall, and this keeps recurring. What would be the problem with putting up no parking signs? Sending them a letter and saying that we're putting up no parking signs? And then that's an enforceable thing.
But what you need to do is not just do it in front of them, you need to do it on both sides of the road.
Of course.
Up and down.
Of course.
And, I don't know, try to do it that way. I mean, I guess if it says there's no park, and I would put no parking within the right-of-way. Okay, not just no parking.
Yeah.
But because the right-of-way is so wide there.
Yeah.
I just don't understand why they don't want to comply with your wishes. I mean, you guys sent them a lot, because I think we delivered it.
Yes, you did.
And I don't know what that letter contained in it, but it must have been like a cease-and-desist type.
I believe it was, yes.
You know, you've got to do what you've got to do to make it better for the residents out there.
Right.
Right? I mean, and if it's going through the court system, then you've got to go through the court system, I would think.
But we have the right without going through the court system to put up no parking signs. It's our right-of-way.
Or no trespassing signs at that rate.
You know, what, why go through the courts if we can just simply put up the no parking signs and...
And then we'll go enforce the no parking.
And then enforce the no parking.
And then they'll get tickets.
Yeah.
We can try that, but I guess that's the way you want to go.
I in no means want to stifle any business in town, but I encourage them to move to the downtown location. We have plenty of buildings that could be used for such operations.
Right.
Excellent.
Madam Chair, would the planning board have anything to offer on this, or is this totally with...
This is not a planning board issue. Yeah. Is there any kind of a motion on the part of the board to, for an action here?
I'd make the motion to grant the authority to the police department to post no parking signs along North Ashland Road on both sides of the road within the right-of-way.
You're going to post the road.
It would be the DPW, the Highway Department.
To enforce it, yes.
I mean, it's one of those things where, you know, I just, you send them a letter that says, "You leave your cars or they're going to tow them."
Yep.
Advise them of that, too.
Yeah, well, we could send a letter, a letter, again, a strongly worded letter, saying this is, you know, what we're doing. And, you know, as a reminder that cars parked illegally will be ticketed and/or towed. So, Craig, is that...
Well, we could do it. It's going to cost some money. That line that I would take signage out of is already overspent.
Okay.
By 200 and what?
Do you have any idea what the cost would be on this?
Not sure. That's a custom sign. They don't, you know, within the right-of-way doesn't exist. No parking signs are probably easy.
Yeah.
But I'd have to have it custom-made. We can't do that.
Can you get us a price?
But it's not just a sign, it's the post.
Yeah.
You know, it's $30 each post, so depending on how big you want to put up.
I've seen the ones that are just generally mass-produced that say no parking and has spots underneath, you know, when you write in here to road or what, and here to corner.
Yeah, that looks a little gaudy.
It does. I'm just looking at the bottom line, you know, to save him some money.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know what is, I mean, I could have J.D. Designs quote us maybe, or go down to the highway signs.
Yeah.
The real signs, get a quote, but I don't know how many you had in mind.
I didn't.
You said both sides of the road.
I mean, what is the, you know, you're going to have to put them so it's reasonable because it's like when you post your property, no trespassing, if they can't see one sign from the other sign, then, you know, they use that and then it becomes hard to enforce it because they go to court and they argue that they didn't realize that, that, oh, I thought it was just here and there, not necessarily here.
We can find the money, but...
Yeah, my thought process for looking into the cost is that history shows that if you put anything in place, that someone as opposed to it disappears. So be it speed bumps or signs, I don't want to see your lines.
But, you know, you're going to want to keep them back away from the road so it won't become a plowing issue.
Yeah.
Oh, and they're plowed and weighed back.
That's true.
Okay, so now you're going to get them a little further off the road than you would like when we're doing the no parking stuff on Main Street.
So then you have to make them bigger.
I mean, take a ride down by the ballpark, you'll see the no parking signs on both sides of the road that the state put in.
Yeah.
So I would think it would be similar to that, and you'd probably want them every 200 feet or so, probably, so you can see from one to the other.
Could you come back to us with some quotes, Craig?
Yeah, I'll talk with Tony and see how many he thinks we should have.
Okay.
We can go out there and look at it.
Present a quote.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to at least move forward with the parking signs. Obviously, we need further information. Is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I will recuse myself in this matter. I believe that the property owner in question is adjacent to the village of Riverbend, which is, I'm an owner of units there, but I will reserve the right to maintain a vote in, you know, in other future discussions on, based on, you know, that are legislative in fashion.
Fair enough. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abeying.
Okay, thank you.
Did anyone second it?
Oh, yes, it was, somebody did second it. Any other old business? Hearing none, I will move to select board items. Meeting order policy.
Yes, so, Madam Chair, if I may. This is basically just a follow-up to the meeting that we had on July 24th. I referenced the meetings here in the information that was provided. The minutes of that meeting date as follows. It was determined that the select board followed rules of order, therefore any selectman can call order if they feel there is a need and can also call upon the police chief for assistance if necessary. All I'm proposing here is that a vote be taken to make that the official policy of the select board.
Is that a motion?
Well, I mean, is there any...
Is it a motion? First, we need a motion.
Okay, I mean, we've had preliminary discussion on other items before a motion is made, so that's what I was...
I'm asking for a motion so we can have a discussion.
All right, so yes, I'd like to make the motion that the Ashland Board of Selectmen officially adopt the order policy established by majority consensus at the July 24th, 2017 meeting, which reads, "Any selectman can call order if they feel there is a need and can call upon the police chief for assistance if necessary."
Is there a second?
I will second that motion for discussion.
Okay, discussion. Harold?
Well, I think that this is a good idea as far as keeping order in the meeting and that the statement that was made is true. I have researched and it seems like that any selectman, it's proper verbiage, that's not sitting selectmen or, you know, not vice-chair or not chair. I think that that stands. The rest of it, asking police chief for assistance if necessary, the only thing that I had a concern of is there should, should there be some kind of, if it's the first, you know, similar to if there's a first recant where you say, okay, please may I have order? And then the chair, if the chair called for order? Would it be the same as if the chair called for order or would it be a second recant? Because in previous verbiage, it would say that if the chair did not call for order, then it would go to a sitting member. So should we designate that? Because I think it's a good idea to maintain order and, quite honestly, I've been involved in conversations where I felt not comfortable calling for order because I was the person who was, you know, being, I guess, talked down to is the term I would use. So I think that there should be some kind of discretion there. You know, perhaps it should be the second call, that it should be, if we ask for order, I agree with your, everyone should be of the call order. But I don't think that it should be a preliminary, preliminary call to order that would summon the police chief by a sitting board member. Perhaps the preliminary with the chair, but that would allow some time to see if the scenario settled down before the police chief needed to be called upon. That's my belief.
And...
Madam Chair?
I think I'd like to make a comment first, if you don't mind. My huge concern with this is, yes, I think it's all right for people to call order. But it, again, is subjectivity. We have no criterion, no objective criterion on which to establish whether or not an order is, a call to order is even required. In the situation that you specifically referred to, Tasha Singh, yes, somebody did raise their voice, but the conversation then settled down. There was no further issue whatsoever. Now, had you called order at that point because you felt that voice was too loud, I would have had to question whether or not the comment that was made was, "Don't interrupt me, I'm, you know, it's my turn to talk," or whatever it was, that then, that individual could then call you out of order. And where does it end? It gets, again, so ridiculous. We are not respecting our people. As I have said so many times, emotions get high from time to time. And when the meeting gets out of control, that is the time to stop it. Because one person raises their voice or one person in the audience, and this has happened too, makes a nasty comment to the board. Did I call order? No, because it was one comment and that was the end of it. And I don't want to give us license to be shouting order when one person, subjectively, not objectively, feels, quote, threatened. And I am really reluctant to adopt this policy because there is no criterion, again, under which to judge, you know. I think, again, it's common sense. If the meeting is out of order, everybody's going to know it. One raised voice does not constitute an out-of-order meeting. And so I cannot support something that we would impose and then invite a free-for-all going forward. So that's my comment.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So there was a webinar this past week that was done by NHMA, and they actually recommend in there having a policy for calling order. That's a formal policy. And it seems that the board has continuously said that it's important to have an order policy. You know, this is my second attempt at trying to establish one. I would urge the remainder of the board to put some time into drafting, you know, such a policy. In this case, on this occasion, I've taken the actual words of the remainder of the board and turned it into a policy, and yet the remainder of the board doesn't seem to be interested in their own words.
Excuse me, I think that that is an unfair judgment. I made my opinion, I didn't hear anyone else say that. So, you know, please don't say the rest of the board.
Well, Madam Chair, it does say here in the minutes, it said, "It was determined that the select board follows rules of order, therefore any selectman can call order," and so on. So it seems to indicate that the consensus of the board was that statement.
I believe even I agreed with that. And again, I stand by that. But again, I'm expressing my concern that adopting some specific wording is a slippery slope and it gets us into trouble. Again, we have rules of procedure, we have rules of order, there's Robert's Rules of Order, and all of that stuff should be followed. And I will stand by this consensus thing, but you adopt language, especially when you say you can call on the police, and I agree with what Harold said, man, you're going to find yourself in trouble because one person gets offended or one person in the audience gets offended.
That was my thought process of the second recant.
Yeah.
Was that that would give, that would give the audience and it would give the board a chance to step back from the situation and to realize that it's passed over that threshold of being comfortable.
Right.
So I think that that second recant, it does keep, you know, your protocol of, say, chair, vice-chair, sitting members, but at the same time, it respects the fact that, hey, this person is being ostracized or they feel that they're being ostracized by a member of the public, therefore they have the ability. I think there needs to be that second recant.
Well, at least. But again, we've had conversations that have gone round and round and round until we finally called the question and never felt the need to throw people out because of it. Tony, you know, please weigh into this. A meeting should not get out of order, absolutely, and nobody should be rude on our side or their side.
I totally agree with you. I, you know, Robert's Rules of Order is what should be in place. You know, you know I'm not a big fan of extra stuff that's added in, okay? You know, another form that we need to fill out. What do you need, something else to govern how a meeting should run? Either using Robert's Rules or you're not. Okay? But to be quite honest with you, sometimes meetings don't go the way people want them and you're going to have a little bit thicker skin some days.
Absolutely.
Okay? But I personally don't think you can beat something. I mean, I don't think the meetings have been that ridiculous. I go to every meeting.
No, I don't either.
Okay?
We used to have some.
Yeah, we used to.
One time, I interviewed somebody and they, they left. Okay? You know, I agree with you. People are going to get emotional about stuff, their voices are going to raise, but I think when it's pointed out and somebody says, you know, this needs to calm down, I think it usually does.
Well, yeah, it does.
But the people are ostracized, I'm the sergeant-at-arms, and if I thought it was going to really get out of hand, I'd jump in.
I'm sure you would.
Oh, yeah, we know that.
Okay, so, you know, I...
I'm going to agree with Fran as far as the consensus that we made before go without having to have a formal, a formal, what's the word I went?
Policy.
Policy.
Yeah, we do have policies.
Right.
And, you know, we were actually presented with a document at the beginning of the year that we declined to accept, and that included order. And now we're getting into a specific item that, to me, is a slippery slope, and I'm not opposed to calling order and I'm not opposed to, yes, Tony, please.
A policy, then who enforces the policy?
Exactly.
I mean, you get, you keep going, who enforces that policy?
I know.
Now is it for somebody else to say that you didn't follow the policy?
Precisely.
You go back to the finger point, because everything goes on.
Yeah.
And again, the criterion is subjective, not objective.
But policies are supposed to be merely a guideline.
Exactly.
But Robert's Rules has guidelines for how you govern the meetings.
And that's what they are, guidelines.
Yeah. Yes, Taysha Singhah.
So, one of the things during the NHMA webinar that they actually spoke about is that Robert's Rules was not the recommended meeting protocol because it's complex, and it's burdensome, and, you know, those who have prior knowledge or detailed knowledge of it can then kind of move the meeting to meet their agenda. So, you know, I hear this discussion of Robert's Rules. That seems to be a separate topic. I don't wanna leave this discussion with the assumption that Robert's Rules has been adopted by the board.
It has not.
So...
And I would agree with you. I think that it, it is a guideline, and we generally follow those procedures, but we have not adopted that specific rules of procedure.
True.
And nor should we, at this point. I think, you know, we have clearly stated operating policy, and we, we need to abide by that. And, and again, we're wasting enormous time on, on minuscule things that have no help to the town whatsoever. We have so many more important issues to discuss, rather than some one person being at the right to call order because some voice was raised. I'm just, I, I'm frankly tired of the whole conversation, but that's just my opinion.
Will you call the question, Madam Chair?
I will be happy to call the question. All those in favor of formally adopting a policy as referenced in the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Ah, let's see. Update for nondiscrimination policy.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My item. So, I just wanted to recommend to the board that we add gender identity to the nondiscrimination and equal opportunity employment statement that we currently have. So, it would read, and this, this is my motion. So, a motion that the Board of Selectmen modify its nondiscrimination and equal opportunity employment statement to include gender identity, and to read as follows, "The Town of Ashland prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, sexual orientations, gender identity, religion, age, disability, marital or family status. The Town of Ashland is an equal opportunity employer."
Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, discussion.
I feel that this is something that we should ponder, because as the age moves forward, and you start to see that this is more and more socially acceptable in society, and there's more people that are choosing that lifestyle, that we should not leave it out of the verbiage.
It's fine with me.
I'm pretty sure most states in New England already have it.
Yeah, I, I think it should be part of the state rule, and as you've said, it's become a very hot topic lately, and, and should be dealt with. I just wanna make sure we're complying with the state rules. I have no issue with including that in the verbiage because I, I don't think we would discriminate. I think when we say we're nondiscrimination, we're equal opportunity employer, it covers that. But this is a specific hot topic, and I personally have no issue with including it.
It's fine with me.
This, this statement is from our town letterhead.
Yeah.
We get these printed with the state, with, actually, the state prison, Denzil. We just got an order. This was, I actually think, I actually think Pat Crowe ordered it in January or February or something like that.
So, I don't think we should throw those out. I think we should continue to use them.
Okay.
But going forward, it's something that we can include. I think it would be a waste of money. I mean, I think we've stated clearly that we support nondiscrimination of any kind, but it would be foolish to go to the extreme of throwing away good paper, so... Okay, all those in favor of adding that, changing the text to include gender identity in the future, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Date for the next Board of Select meeting. As you know, the next normally scheduled Board of Select meeting would be the Tuesday after Labor Day, and unfortunately, that is our next election. And all of us are required to be at that election. So, I don't think having a BOS meeting at 8:00 at night is a really good idea. So, we need to come up with another date.
I would say that it would make sense to make it September 11th, being the Monday following.
I, I would be fine with that. You know, we do have that volunteer day, but that will end by early afternoon.
It'll be mostly dark by then.
It should be. It should be, so...
That would be fun.
Is, is that okay with everybody? Move it to the 11th?
Yeah.
Okay.
6:30 here.
6:30. When do we go back to the school?
Next.
The next meeting at the school?
So, at the school.
So, you, wait a minute, you wanna meet the 11th?
Yeah.
And then you'd meet again the 18th?
In two weeks, yeah.
Because you meet the first and the third.
That'd be next week.
I know.
That's what I mean. So, you'd meet two weeks in a row.
So, you wanna...
You'd have to bump it to the 25th.
Make that one ahead, too.
Would you bump it to the 25th?
Either way, you're gonna, you're gonna be thrown off your every first and the third.
Yeah, we can, we can bump the second one, too.
Should we confer with TV? What dates there in Plymouth?
I already, I did.
Okay.
What was the date of the sixth?
Plymouth's second, or fourth.
Yeah. Yeah, so you would, yeah, you'd coincide with Plymouth, right?
We've had meetings two weeks in a row in the past. It's not ideal, but I, I think it's more important that we get them filmed.
Yeah, I think that if we do the 11th, and then we go to the 25th, the 11th, if we missed one meeting on TV, wouldn't be so bad as if we set ourselves up in that schedule of always missing it.
To miss two. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, I think we can suck it up in meetings two weeks in a row.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
So, we're supposed to do the 11th and 18th?
11th and 18th, yeah.
Okay.
It will be at the school library.
Very good.
Okay. Any other select board items? Okay, liaison reports, electric commission.
Yes, thank you. So, I, I gave you a handout here that just has some issues that were, or items of interest that were brought to my attention in the last meeting. One is, and I'm just gonna read them off as I wrote them here. So, they had a concern that the hiring process for the new DPW director should be completed before mid or end of September to properly allow, properly allow for winter preparations. The next one is that the commission, they requested to receive a copy of the RSA, or the other document that mentioned the trustees of the trust funds may request Board of Selectmen to pay for incidentals, which Mr. Smith has told me since then is RSA 31,24.
Yes.
Okay. That's, and then further, that any mail received at the town office that lists the electric commission as the recipient before or to the commission in a timely and systematic manner. I mentioned that I didn't, I didn't even know if that was under our purview. It sounded like that might be under the clerks, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. And then the final one is the electric commission's quarterly report has been compiled. They've told me that it's been compiled and will be submitted shortly to the commission. I have not yet received a copy that I know of, so that's, those are the elements of my update.
Okay. Thank you. Budget Committee, Harold.
Recently, the TA has finished gathering the budgets minus one, which would be our land use, and the plan is to have all of them to the Budget Committee by September 1st. I must say that this is the earliest that I can recall in the last four or five years that we've had our, our budgets ready for the Budget Committee. I'm very proud of that. My one concern lies within the scheduling, like everything, that's the devil in the detail. I was handed a list of scheduled dates, and I wanted to bring this up to the board. Three of them fell on Friday evenings. One of them was on the date of September 5th, which is our special election. And as of five minutes ago, one of them was on September 11th, which is our makeup date for a meeting of that evening. And the last remaining of the six was August 30th, which, that is the day that our TA is working out of town from home, and he would have to return for said meeting. So, I guess I would ask the board to...
You shouldn't be in there on Friday nights.
I would, yes, I would ask that the board give Mr. Smith the authority to have a meeting with the chair and try to go back to the way that we used to schedule things, say, last year.
I'll agree with that.
Things fell on a Wednesday, or, or something along that. My personal opinion is that, being a family man, and also that Charlie has children, and so do a lot of our department heads, that I think that it's unfair to ask our department heads to come in on a Friday night for a meeting as a scheduled scenario.
No Friday night meetings.
Usually, I've been to one Friday night meeting in the five years that I've been involved with town politics, and that was an 11th-hour scenario where he had to get a budget signed before a Monday in January.
Yep.
I think that if we kowtow to this and allow our department heads to be dragged in on a Friday night, that, that is not the path we wanna travel.
I totally agree with you, Harold. I don't think we should...
The chair shouldn't be making the dates anyway.
No.
The chair is not the boss.
No.
It's a consensus of the group.
I must say...
When the dates are to be made.
I will, I must say that at the joint meeting that we had, we had our select board meeting, we were handed a piece of paper, and we all wrote the dates that we were not available. And I do, I was not the only person that wrote Friday not being available, and it was merely for the means of our department heads, and how they work Monday through Friday, why should they give up their weekend plans?
Exactly.
I think it's very unfair for us to ask of anybody to go to those meetings on a Friday evening.
When I outreach, I outreach as to what was the parameters. You know, if this was a discussion that happened when we were in our non-public, after Taysha Singh and myself had left this meeting, where we were both liaisons, or he's the alternate, I'm the liaison. And I said, "Well, what is different?" You said that the consensus, or that the majority cannot make the Wednesday night meetings, and that we have two new members this year. And, you know, I said, "Is there something that is, you know, scheduling with several people, or, you know, the last four years I've been involved, three years I've been involved, they've always been Wednesdays, and as far as I can remember back, they've been Wednesdays?" And the only retort I got was, "This isn't last year."
Yeah.
So, I outreach to all of Branch, and it just didn't work.
No.
So, that's why I'm coming to the board and asking the TA to handle this at this time.
I agree.
My thought is that as the liaison, or the liaisons, we can, or those that are coming, you know, the department heads and the other members can ask the Budget Committee to consider, you know, certain dates and times. I, I believe it's outside of our, you know, reach here for the Board of Selectmen to give any kind of instructions to the Budget Committee.
I, I would totally agree with that, but we can say that we will not have our department heads, because we respect their personal time, or our town administrator, who would have to attend many of them, to give up a weekend family time or whatever to attend a Friday night meeting. And if they choose to have them on Friday nights, that's their call. But we will not send representatives from the town. We will not ask any of our representatives from the town to attend them.
I think that it's unfair.
And let them figure it out.
And that's why I mentioned, I mentioned in the beginning that as long as that I can remember, we've had this budget prepared earlier than any year that I've been, ever been involved.
Yeah.
I don't know about how lo, how long Mr. Rule's been involved, if he's ever seen it before, September 1. But wouldn't, don't you think that a Friday evening meeting should be reserved for an 11th-hour scenario and not the norm? I mean, that's, that's my opinion. I mean, we're all welcome to our opinion, but I know I've conferred with a few department heads, and the concern varies from, "So, I'd have to come down on a Friday night to unlock a building for them," or, "Well, I would like it any other night," or, "Well, it's really not my favorite night of the week to have a meeting."
Yeah.
Because these people, you know, like you and I, they're, they like to spend time with their families, and, you know, myself included, you know, I, I like to travel, and I like to leave on Friday nights. You know, I think that the work week that we all look at is between usually 7:00 a.m. on Monday morning and 5:00 p.m. on Friday night, you know, unless we have a snowstorm or a fire or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But our regularly scheduled events are within those parameters, and all I ask is that they don't schedule outside of those parameters.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I was just gonna ask that, here. Taysha Singh, I was gonna ask Harold to make the motion.
I would make the motion to allow Mr. Smith to outreach to the chair of the Budget Committee to find scheduled dates, whereas five of the six dates that were handed to us do not coincide with anything that we, any of us can attend. I mean, we really need to work together, and that's, you know, we talked about that with the joint meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe that this is overstepping our bounds. In matters of budget and budget preparation, I believe the Budget Committee has the full capacity and authority to request that the department heads and whoever else they need to come and speak to them can do so. Of course, they would, I imagine that they would work with their schedules, so I, I can't support this motion.
Okay. Again, I, I think as a board, we can't tell them when to meet, but we can tell them what we won't do, and what we won't do is require any of our department heads or our town administrator to attend any Friday night meetings, or any meetings that conflict with given schedules, so...
I agree.
Yes, Tony?
Can I just weigh in for a second?
Please.
Harold talked to me. I'd prefer that I be on a Friday, 'cause my schedule, I'm off on Fridays and Saturdays.
Yep.
It would be more convenient for me to do it. But this is one thing I'm not gonna allow to happen, is that they review my budget without even saying it and defending it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, Tony. I'm glad you said that.
Because it's driven the pieces.
Right.
Okay. That's what will happen if I'm not able to defend it.
I, I just wanted to make sure that consequently, that any feelings towards myself or anyone weren't laid upon another individual.
No, I, no, I get that, Harold.
No, I, I would, I think everyone would object, and we would object if they made decisions without discussing it with a relevant party.
I just, I just think, you know, we've never had budget meetings on Friday nights.
Budget meetings, no.
I don't understand why they're doing this, and just, if that's what they're planning on doing is to have Friday nights, is it because they feel that we won't come, and then they can...
I have, we're not gonna question their motives, but they've scheduled it to suit them, and it doesn't work.
And it is, I've been doing it, it's never been on Friday.
No, it has never been. And again, as Harold pointed out, there are emergencies that happen from time to time, and then we figure it out.
It was one year we got into...
But going into it, it's crazy.
One year we got into a crunch, and I think we actually met on a Saturday.
We've done that, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it was because it was a crisis for a crunch.
Right, right.
And that's why I aforementioned that we have the budget, you know, we're ready to plop it on their lap September 1.
Right.
Well, we hope.
Well, we've, we've got all of the minus land use.
We'll have most of it.
Minus land use.
We'll have most of it, so...
There is three months.
There is, absolutely, David.
And that's my retort as well.
Thank you.
That's my retort as well.
I am not sure. They haven't even had a mid-year review, which is also standard, that there's been a mid-year review with all the department heads, and that has not happened. And now, they're going to decide on a budget in September? We, September, we have nine months' worth of data to give them. We don't in August, so I, but in any case, that's, that's another issue. I think imposing a Friday night on any of our people is, is unacceptable, so...
Right.
So, all those in favor of authorizing Charlie Smith to see if he can work with the Budget Committee and expressing our, our issues, that we do not ask our department heads or our TA to attend Friday night meetings.
Or your selectmen.
Oh, this, yeah. Our selectmen, too. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, Fourth of July Committee, if anything else is...
I got good news, no. I got happy news, okay?
Okay, yay. Oh, please.
Hopefully, you haven't heard all of this already, but I, I am pleased to share that we have 13 new members to the Fourth of July Committee, and many with life skills needed for this task. I also look forward to them becoming more intertwined with our group of committees, and that they shine on their own, in their own parameters, and that we can all look forward to having fireworks in 2018.
Wonderful. That, that is good news. We just work out all the bugs, and again, fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, it wasn't on here, but I have a report from the Economic Development Committee. As I said, we had a meeting on the 18th, and at that meeting, we had four of the five active mill owners. We had LRPC, DES, EPA, and then, then the committee. And we're planning on having a much larger meeting in, in later in the fall, where we invite all of the mill owners, again, local businesses, and then several state and government agencies who can provide grants and, and whatnot, expertise. So, we're still planning for that. We're gonna meet again tomorrow morning briefly. The meeting was very, very positive. The people from LRPC and the DES and EPA were very impressed that the mill owners are talking to one another, because that has been our stumbling block in the past in terms of getting anything done. That's a problem with the mills, five different, six different owners, one of whom is not the least bit active. So, it's looking very positive, and I, I will give you further reports. We had a discussion on when the appropriate town, time is for the town to take the property for taxes, and one of the recommendations is, is after the Phase 2 is completed, that we take it to give us leverage to get additional funding, grant funding that we as a town could get, but a private business couldn't. So, there are a lot of things to decide. So there are a lot of things to decide. But again, I felt coming out of that meeting that this was a real bright spot in Ashland's future. We had so much opportunity. We talked about the possibility of having a design charrette, because one of our problems has been, okay, what do we do with it? Do we just tear a building down? What kind of businesses could go there? I know Bino LaMontagne, who represents businesses in the state of New Hampshire and elsewhere, says that there is a lack of good space for small manufacturing, for example. And we have a couple of buildings that are ready to go. They have high ceilings, and businesses in Canada are looking for that kind of space. So we're talking about marketing spaces ultimately, advertising it on the state website. A lot of good things happening. Nothing concluded yet, but I will keep you posted. I haven't been this fired up in a very long time, so...
Yeah, I guess.
Good news.
That's great.
Okay.
Now, is there, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to speak on this item.
No, go ahead.
Now, is there anything that we can do in regards to, you say, I'm thinking, outside of the box, you say Canadian businesses, okay? Now, when I think of northern borders, and I think of grants, and I think of businesses, I'm just, I'm just seeing it coming together in my head, and I'm wondering, is there any, I don't want to pigeonhole us, but is there any particular market that they mentioned as far as that our quintessential little New England town would be ideal for?
Well, they did mention many things that we already know were ideal for. Our location is prime. The fact that we have a way underutilized water and sewer system. The fact that we have electric rates that are low.
He's talking about what type?
What type of business? Again, I think we need to talk to a lot of people, and the Select Board will be involved in this future meeting. And yes, there are some things that we need to figure out what's best. I mean, do we want Walmart in here? I don't think anybody does. But light manufacturing, I mean, that's an industrial area. I mean, all those things would have to be approved by the public, obviously. But right now, a lot of that space is used for just storage, and the owners would prefer that they're getting more income from it, from renting it to a thriving business than just storing a bunch of boats. So there are opportunities. Some of it will depend on what we do with the White Building. You know, how much of it is torn down, how much of it we can actually reclaim. There's environmental issues to consider, but, you know, you should keep your, your mind going, and I'm sure you will. And we'll all have an opportunity for more input as this thing moves along. But again, our biggest hurdle right now that we're about to jump over is this Phase 2 study in the White Building in the Boiler Room. So it's very, very exciting for Ashland.
Yes. You've got on the agenda my liaison report.
Go right ahead, Lee.
I have two planning boards, Heritage Commission and...
Go for it.
And Purlak. I'll do it really briefly, though, and I'm sorry I'm late, I had to attend a week.
It's quite all right.
Planning Board, we discussed zoning ordinance amendments that were submitted for a vote in, at the 2016 meeting, and how they can better be reworded for this year. We discussed a lot line adjustment for Jonathan Dupe. We discussed 51 Main Street, a new business that appeared to be going in for used appliances, and the need for a site plan review and/or sign permit, and we were going to get into that when the business disappeared and the building is empty again. We met with Water and Sewer Committee, David Toth and Alan Silly, about their pre-construction